The Spring Grove Board of Education meeting for October 12, 2017. Roll call?
Anderson?
Here.
Bat?
Here.
Flagey?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Stand for the flag. The flag's over there.
It's behind that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get a bigger flag. Get some smaller tables too, so you can be a little closer. Working on that.
Four minutes. I have a motion to accept approval, adoption of the agenda. Oh. A motion to approve. I'm sorry. Second. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bat?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
One point three approval of September 28, 2017 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Say it.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bat?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Two point one, public participation. Mr. Schreier?
Mr. President, we're going to switch two of these reports. We actually have two students coming for two point one. We're waiting on the second one. They're caught in traffic. So we're going to turn it over to the newly hired Spring Grove City manager. Chris Pesuda is here tonight because of the request at the last board meeting to discuss the new construction that is happening at my Austin Landing. It's not a long presentation because there's not much to say, but certainly would like to hear from him and if there are any questions. But again, I open the floor to Chris Pesuda and thank you for being here and supporting our school.
Thank you for the invitation. Where should I stand?
Wherever.
You move the camera.
No, it stays on the board. So you won't even appear on the board?
Yeah, okay, good. I've been told I have a taste for radio.
Yeah.
But thank you for the invitation. I appreciate it. Always, it's a great time to come up and meet the school board and this, and always talk about superintendent, terror, and everybody, certainly workable job. But yeah, I was told to talk a little bit about some of the developments going on specifically the Austin Landing. I will preface it by saying, Austin Landing is not in the Spring Grove School District. So just so everybody's aware of that. I know the lines are a little blurred everywhere where the school district runs within the city, and I'll talk about that a little bit after the Austin Landing portion. But you may have read in the paper, Austin Landing, there's about 60 acres on the south side of Austin Boulevard that's getting ready to be developed. It's a joint venture between Archie Properties and EDS and another company called Bizcap. They've got a bunch of different owners up there in that property. But they are getting ready to finally develop that. How I like to describe it is, it's going to look, it's going to be essentially the same. Was it that bad?
Yes.
Essentially, I like to describe it, it's kind of, it'll have a lot of the same uses as the north side, but the traffic situation will be completely different. I know one thing we always hear from everybody, that, oh please, when that develops on the south side, do not have the traffic patterns the same. And the city's really taken that to heart. We worked with a developer up there, a gentleman named Larry Dillon, who actually lives in the school district. He moved into Clear Creek Township a few years ago. But we've taken that to heart, and what we're doing as part of that project is, we are actually funding the infrastructure using TIF dollars, tax increment financing. So what that does is, it diverts property tax dollars into what's called a TIF fund so that the city can use it to put in the roads, the water, the sewer, all those kinds of things. We are requiring the developer to actually, we're going to be putting the infrastructure in day one. So the streets, the, you know, the light poles, the water sewer, will all be done day one before any building is built, or in conjunction with some buildings being built. What that does is, it does not allow any changes to the traffic situation up there, the traffic flow, which is a good thing. We've engineered it in a way that makes it both vehicular and pedestrian friendly. Unfortunately, what kind of happened up on the north side was, they had a master plan at first, but it changed three, four, five, six, seven, 10, 15, 20 times, it seems like, the meetings I was in. And what would happen was, they initially proposed building A, you know, 70,000 square foot building to be in one certain location. Well, they'd get another use of it when it come in and put 100,000 square foot building, which would then change the accesses and everything like that. So in this case, we don't, we're not going to have that. What's going to happen is, they can change the uses within, kind of on the chessboard, but it's got to fit within those access points that we've provided. So we feel that's a great plan to not only, to make sure that the vehicular access and driving through the property will be set in stone and they can't change it, and it should be to the best, you know, ability that we can design it. So that's one advantage we think we have from, from the north side developing first. We've kind of, I don't want to say mistakes, but we've kind of learned from there of mistakes and what we can do better on the south side. So again, 60 acres up there, again, same uses that you probably see on the, on the north side. You know, there's going to be hotels, restaurants, some retail, multifamily apartments. Again, same thing you see on the north side, just on the, on the south side. We can't, they haven't announced any users yet, but we do know, like I said, we know there's, they're talking to a hotel, a major retail, a national retail organization. They've also got a few high-end restaurants and things.
White Castle?
White Castle. No. There won't be any drive-throughs there, so sorry. You won't be able to hop up there for your White Castle, but. So once we're, once they tell us, we'll be able to announce that to the public, but they're, they're negotiating with a lot of different people up there right now. The neat thing is, it's kind of a new urbanist design, so what you're going to see is, it's actually a fairly dense development, but it's dense upwards. So you're going to have a lot of two- and three-story buildings with a lot of retail on the bottom, with residential on the top. So again, those kind of developments allow for a lot of pedestrian access, so you can walk around to the different restaurants, different bars that may be up there. Anybody that lives there can walk downstairs, grab a bite to eat. So, you know, like I said, we like to call that a new urbanist design, so that's kind of how they've done that. They actually, they hired a gentleman that lives out in Long Beach, California, that does their designs, and he does a phenomenal job. We were, we were so impressed with the design they had for that site, but we actually hired that same gentleman to help us redesign the IGA Plaza and the redevelopment down there. So I can talk a little bit about that as well, but. So, but again, not in the Spring Grove School District. I know a lot of people think that just because it's in the city of Spring Grove. What's weird up there, it's in the city of Spring Grove, it's in the Miami-Sburg School District, and it has a Miami-Sburg address. So anything up there will say Miami-Sburg 45342. It's just the way the lines are drawn. There's nothing we can do about it. Changing zip codes in the school district lines, I think, takes an act of Congress and the Pope has to sign on.
So can you do that?
No. We've gotten through Congress, we haven't been able to make contact with the Pope yet to do that, but. So again, more information will come out about that project as it gets moving, but we hope to have infrastructure construction underway in May or June of next year. So that's, that development's going to hop, I think, once they start getting, so, once we get the infrastructure in, they start assigning some tenants, I think you're really going to see a lot of building popping up out of the ground there. So it's a very, very exciting project for the city.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is this the area, like where you've got Kohl's and TJ Maxx, and then there's the road?
Austin Boulevard?
Austin.
It's south of that.
South of that.
Yeah, so it's the 60 acres, south, yeah, west of the airport, north of South Tech Boulevard and south of Austin. So it's a big, there's a big mountain there.
So are we responsible, like the city's responsible for fire and police and everything?
Not fire. Clear Creek Township does the fire.
The township. Well, we don't get any of the tax dollars?
But we do.
The city does?
Right.
But the school does.
Correct. Correct. And again, that's just the way the school district lines are drawn, and actually, that's a great segue. How that kind of works, some people don't understand. I think when the state literally was founded 200 years ago, when they developed school district boundaries, those were typically set along township boundaries, they think. Don't quote me exactly on that, but those have been set for a long, long time. Cities are actually allowed to annex land from townships into the city. And so that's where a lot of confusion comes, because we've been able to annex, that property used to be in Miami Township, which was then part of the Miami-Sburg School District. When a city annex land from the township to the city, the only thing that changes is the city boundary, not the school district boundary. And in certain situations, the township boundary doesn't change either. However, we've got a coterminous boundary agreement with Clear Creek Township that we passed, I believe, in the 80s, that said, if Spring Grove annexes any land from any other township into the city, that then becomes Clear Creek Township. That can change, but my understanding is, school district boundaries, it's very, 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 very tough to do that.
So his exciting announcement is, half the tax dollars they receive in the city are coming to us. Is that without a smile?
Yes, that would have been a good smile, if you'd gotten one back from me. And again, it's nothing, obviously, against the Spring Grove School Districts. As you all know, we do everything we can to support you guys. Unfortunately, that's just one thing that we, it's very, very, very difficult to change. So that helps.
It does, yes.
And it also, it's good to talk about the Franklin side. So a lot of people also think Kroger, the Thorntons, where the new Starbucks is going, is also in the Spring Grove schools because it's in the city of Spring Grove. Also not the case. That's Franklin schools. Again, we annexed land back into Franklin Township a long time ago. That came into the city, but the school district boundaries did not change. So anything that develops, it's pretty much Pioneer to the west, with a little jogs in there, but primarily, all of it goes to the Franklin schools.
We tried to annex it years ago.
80s?
Yeah, it, it, just like I said, the Pope must have signed off on that, but.
So where do we start getting the tax dollars, like down 741?
At the county line. So if you've ever gone up that way, you'll see the small green side that says Montgomery County on one side and Warren County on the other. We start, you guys start collecting.
Where is that? Like, top?
It's just south of the airport. It kind of runs at a diagonal.
Okay, so.
The road, the tennis court.
The road, the tennis court, yeah, just south.
In the hospital?
Yes, Henry Hospital is it.
No, I guess we're.
Children's.
Children's Hospital is mine.
Children's, we don't, but Henry.
Correct.
The road that goes to that hospital, to the tennis courts. The tennis courts are in us, the hospital.
Hospital.
It's the other side.
Right there, okay.
Yeah, it is, like I said, it kind of goes at a diagonal from the airport.
Gotcha.
Part of the airport's actually in Warren County, and part of, most of it's in Montgomery.
Okay, that's helpful.
So on the Franklin side, then, pretty much the delineation's Pioneer, pretty much, again, it jogs a little bit, but, so everything east of that is you guys, everything west of that's Franklin. On the north side, again, everything north of the county line is Miami-Sburg, everything south is you guys.
Okay.
And then east, that goes all the way to, I don't know where, but that's it, what you're talking about there.
Any other questions for our distinguished guests? Mr. Pesuda, we thank you for your support. We thank you for your articulate presentation, I've been in all series, thanks for what you do for this district. I don't want to stick around break, but you know, all these meetings come.
I'm glad.
With that, it's my pleasure, Mr. President, members of the board, turn it over to our great high school president for a presentation of a couple of students that made this entire community proud. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Schreier, and school board. For our first presentation, I, we actually at the high school have four National Merit semifinalists. Two of them were able to be with us this, this evening, Reese Warren and Hannah Stumpfle. The two other students had prior commitments, still weren't able to make it, but the other two students who qualified were Lindsay Coffin and also Isaac Potland, two other great students who are highly involved, obviously their activities, but also a lot of extracurricular activities. So I talked with all four of them, and Reese and Hannah were able to make it. So they're just going to talk just a little bit about the process for the National Merit semifinalists, and then going into hopefully being a finalist, and then just kind of what that means, then why that's an interest to them, and then just future goals as far as colleges are concerned and careers. So whoever would like to start?
I'll start.
Okay, Reese is up first.
I have some information about the National Merit program, how it works. So it's run by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and it provides recognition and scholarships to high school students throughout the country. So the whole competition starts with the PSAT test. 1.6 million juniors around the country take this test, and the top 50,000 scores reach a final status in the National Merit competition. Of those 50,000 high scores, the top 16,000, only about 320 per state, make semifinalist status. So to have four at our high school and there's only 320 states, it's pretty impressive, means we're doing something right. And so then, once you become a semifinalist like me and Hannah, Isaac and Lindsay are, you have to apply to be a finalist if you've already submitted our applications. The application, you have to, for the application, you have to provide information about yourself and your activities, you have to have a school recommendation written by the guidance committee, or the principal, and you have to write a personal essay about a story or a time you learned something, a challenge you overcame, something like that. And then, so you submit this application, and then in the spring, we will hear back to see whether or not you make finalist status. About 15,000 of the 16,000 semifinalists make finalist status, but then that same application is used to determine who actually receives the scholarships, and about, I think it's 7,000 students receive scholarships. And that is the highest level in the competition, the grade on. Personally, I am very proud that I made semifinalist status, and I think it's important to me because it's a sign that all my hard work here has paid off. I try and challenge myself the best I can in school, take difficult classes, like the AP classes we offer here, and I try and approach school with a good work ethic, great attitude every day, best I can, because everyone is me. It's tough on those early Monday mornings, but I believe that my status as a National Merit semifinalist is the direct result of that effort and work I've put in. But there are definitely a few, more than a few factors that contribute to my success. And I think one big one for me is my love of reading. As a kid, I read about every book I could get my hands on that the library could offer. I was reading stacks of books, maybe more than I should have been, but I think that that is directly related to academic success, and my academic success, and my ability to perform well on standardized tests such as the PSAT. And then the last thing I have to credit my success to is outstanding teaching we have here at high school. I really think there are no better teachers, no better teaching staff will find what we have here at the school, love all the teaching, you know. And I would like to be named a finalist this spring, so hopefully, hopefully it works out, hopefully I also get the scholarships. College, it's pretty pricey these days. And I also have a few other school goals that I'm hoping to reach this year. First of all, I'm on the soccer team, on a varsity soccer team, and I'm hoping we, the regular season is drawing to a close, so I'm hoping to go really far and stay term in this year. My last year, I'm going to be upset if you want to come out, it's at home. And I also want to have fun. My last year, year year with my friends is in the Blue Group, gives me a great student section. And I want to, I'm aiming for all As, and I'm on track for all As this year, and then honors diploma, so hopefully, hopefully I can keep that, that works out. And then beyond that, I am hoping to attend the United States Military Academy at West Point and serve in the Army. And I've actually received a letter of assurance from West Point, which means that they deserve the cadetship for me, dependent on assidematically and a congressional nomination. So finger crossed. I would sadly leave this school, because it's really a pretty great place, but I'm excited to see where my path takes me. Thank you for your invitation.
Well, I'm going to tell you again about the National Merit Scholarship competitions. You guys already did that. So this scholarship, it means a lot to me, because again, it has proved that all of the stuff I've done here at high school has, you know, not been for nothing. I'm super honored to have made it, be one of only four people in this high school and only 16,000 people in the country, just a pretty small number, which is surprising, but I'm so honored to be one of those people. I'm happy to have received this nomination as well, which has opened a lot of doors for me, going into college and pursuing a career. I've applied to, I think I've got like seven different schools right now of those, Vanderbilt, Princeton, University of South Carolina, UNC. A couple of those top schools are in that list, and I think being named a semifinalist and hopefully a finalist later will help me with getting into those schools and hopefully getting scholarships for those schools, because again, college is really expensive, and I'm trying to, you know, not have to pay $60,000 a year to go to school. Beyond college, I'm planning on majoring in biomedical engineering as of right now. Might change a little bit, but I want to pursue either pharmaceutical science or possibly like a physician's sort of work more specialized though, like I would like to be either an orthopedic surgeon specializing in hands and wrists, or something of that, or again, back to pharmaceutical science. I would like to be researching cutting-edge new medicines and technologies to help people in the medical field find new cures for diseases, find new drugs to help people, and find new technologies to help, you know, surgeons and doctors do their jobs better. So this, it's recent, no, sorry. Receiving this National Merit Scholarship, I believe, will help me a lot, trying to go forward and achieve those goals. And I attribute a lot of the reason, one of the ways that I was able to perceive, achieve this standing was, again, because of the wonderful teachers here. I've had some great teachers at this school. I love, I still go back and I talk to all of them, I visit them all like once a week, because I just like hanging out with them so much. Like Reese said too, I also have always loved reading, and I've always loved, I've always had kind of a thirst for knowledge since I was a little kid. I remember when I was little, like, my grandpa tells me all the time, I asked her, like, when I was like three years old, like, where does the water in the faucets come from? Like, and she was just like, I, I don't know. She says she knew I'd be trouble right then. But again, I was, I've been reading every book I could read since I was in kindergarten, and I've always kind of had that spark and wonder about the world and about learning. And I think that's really what kind of drove me towards a science-oriented career, and hopefully I'll be able to pursue those goals later in life. But also while I'm here, you know, science is not our great thing, so not kind of all of my life, though. I also love music and art. I'm taking like three art classes this year. I'm going to try to be involved in school musical this year as well. I was in it freshman year. I was unable to be in it the last two years, but hopefully we'll get a part this year. And I also run school track at the school. I've been running track since seventh grade, so I'm hoping to make varsity this year, go out, senior year at the bank. So just all of these experiences here have just made my high school experience really great, and I'm so honored to have gotten this accomplishment with the National Merit semifinalist.
For our two students before Mr. Martin says his final words.
Thank you. You guys are both very driven with the direction with, is it West Point? With West Point in your medical field. What do you feel like at the high school, like what helped you with the directions that you're, with the directions that you're going? What helped you with leading you in those two different directions? Again, it was probably, a lot of the barbers and teachers probably as well in kind of the classes we had. Like, I know I started off taking biology like freshman year, and I ended up really liking that, so I took like physiology sophomore year along with chemistry, and I took AP bio last year, and then especially to the teachers that I know, Mr. Fox, our AP bio teacher, our physiology teacher, I love having him, he's really encouraging me to pursue a science-related career, namely the medical field as well. So I think a lot of it is those classes that we take that kind of show us a lot about what is involved in those types of careers and fields, and then the teachers that kind of push us to do all that. That's great. It's neat to hear teachers that are making the connection with real-life careers outside of just within the books. Yeah, yeah. The teachers that I've had have done a good job of kind of tying in, especially in AP bio, we do a project at the end of the year where we present, we research and present on a new technology in the medical field being like used and like studied, and that kind of really, it really kind of caught my interest, and it, you know, made me think that that's something I'd like to pursue more. Awesome, thank you.
So for me, I pretty much agree with what she said, is the classes and the teachers. West, my choice for West Point is mainly because I've always had a desire to serve, and I think serving my country is the best, so I'm going to pursue that. But major-wise, I would be looking at business, a business major. And so what led to that decision is just, or is because of the class that I took, and also because I took engineering here, and it was a cool class, and Mr. Broderick, who I had as my teacher, was like one of my favorite people, but it totally taught me that I didn't want to be in that here. So even though I love Mr. B, and I talk to him still every day, even though I'm not a student.
The same thing happened with my son. He loved Mr. Broderick, but it taught him he didn't want to. But that's a good thing. That's a really good thing. He has a hands-on experience, and he wanted to go to business, and he took a business class here, and he learned that that was more the direction, which that's an awesome thing with high school classes, is to learn that. So that's, nothing against it, it's teaching you where your passion is, so that's a, that's a positive. So that's awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
So West Point, you're going to be an Army Ranger, right?
Ah, I would be in the Army, and then maybe.
Any other questions? Mr. Martin?
Well, I just want to thank both of them for taking the time to come, and I think the one takeaway is, they are both very well-rounded students and young adults. And kind of what you hit on, Mr. Bat, was they have taken advantage of a variety of different courses, like, you know, just more than just AP, just to kind of help create the path that they, they want to build. And that's what high school's all about, is trying different courses, challenging yourself with rigor to determine what your love is, because that's what you're going to be doing for the next 30, 40 years. That's exactly they've done, and you can see that they are very motivated and have direction once they graduate here, about six months.
Congrats. Great job. Thank you.
Good work. Oh, we could, I'd like to get a picture of the two students with our board. Scott, you got your camera?
No.
They're all behind, and they all scooch together. They might stand up instead of being five, five, five feet apart. All right, now your two hands stand apart.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. It's planned. It's planned.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, we move down to our two presenting.
Two, three, Spring Grove Education Association. Now anybody putting a classification for you, if you not have any public participation here, I don't know, or anyone that wants to speak publicly on any agenda. All right, we move on to work session.
First item tonight of the work session is the committee reports, and our first committee report, brief report from Scott Marshall and District Parent Council.
Face for radio also, so I'll stay behind. For President, members of the board, we met, the District Parent Council met last week for our second meeting of the year. We brought in Randy Vargo, counselor at the junior high, and Dana Mitchell, counselor at the high school. And they presented on the Spring Grove Speaker Series, which is a series of events for parents, community members to come in and attend, geared around different topics of student life. So this first one, brought in a speaker by the name of Tricia, I can't remember the name of it. She's talking about the teen brain and kind of the effects that, teen, sir? More sneezing. What's that pop? The Speaker Series on the effects of the teen brain during kind of the teen years, what?
Test a miracle.
Thank you. Test a miracle, what those effects can have. So that happens on October 19th. It's going to be in the high school in the LGI. It's open to any parents, any community members that want to attend. The Speaker Series for this particular year will occur, I believe there's going to be three or four throughout the year. There'll be another one in November, that's pending speaker schedule. Once they get approval, they'll have a final date for that, and then another one in January. Right now, they're geared towards six through 12, but they are open to parents of elementary students as well. And the intent is, is the following year to look at holding a separate series that would include K through five topics geared towards those parents as well. There is a page set up on the district website, which has all the details on this, including the future Speaker Series that are there, so if you have any questions, we're looking to help promote. The webpage is there also. We also had a presentation by our superintendent discussing facts about the levy in issue 18, and so that was brought up as well there. would include K through five topics geared towards those parents as well. There is a page set up on the district website, which has all the details on this, including the future Speaker Series that are there. So if you have any questions, we're looking to help promote. The webpage is there also. We also had a presentation by our superintendent discussing facts about the levy in issue eighteen. And so that was brought up as well there. Questions were asked and that was pretty much the basis of the meeting. Our third District Parent Council meeting will occur November first. From there, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. President, the second committee that met since the last board meeting was the District, the Business Advisory Council. That night with outside supporters and school people, like we had seventeen attendees, the agenda really was twofold. First part was about our performance. So John, Andrea and Chuck gave the presentation that was given at the last board meeting for this group, went a little bit longer, a little bit more in detail on a couple of things because frankly, those people in there aren't education people. So we explained the things a little bit more. There were some questions there and just really, really happy comments about where we're at with success. We then discussed the levies, a very brief presentation of the facts of the levy and then questions concerning it and really our process promoting the levy and one hundred percent support and happy with what's happening there. Charles Anderson and Dan Goode were in attendance, so if I'm saying something wrong, then they may bite in. After that, we went around the table, not a lot around the table, and we did set our next meeting for December due to the fact that the Business Advisory Council do need to meet four times a year. I'm surprised anybody who has Department of Education saw our next one in December and looking forward to many more attendees. Charles or Dan, any extra comments other than that? Would you pay attention to that?
It was a good meeting, wasn't it? Appreciate everybody's enthusiasm.
A lot of enthusiasm. Mr. President, we can move to three point three central registration software by our freshmen. She actually has a quick press mission. The camera will move over there because you're ready. You have time for all, you've got two hours coming.
Thank you, Andrew, for letting me borrow this. You've got it, Tara. Time to help. I'm so excited. I'm a toy. Okay, so the first thing I have tonight is a presentation on Registration Gateway. Registration Gateway is a software that will integrate not only new student registration, but then the back to school portal. So I'm sure a lot of people that will be watching will know that they have, we've gone back to paper this year. We had final forms last year for the back to school piece and the final forms did not integrate with Dazzle and Carter's book. And so what was happening is parents were going out on the final forms and they were putting all their information in and then the schools were having to actually take all that information and put it in the app. And it was expensive. Final forms, we paid last year nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for final forms. So basically that type of expense, when we're having to do double work because nothing was seamlessly going into Dazzle, which is our coast, that's our main database for information and what we report information to the state with, it wasn't really helping at all with that process. So there's a lot of manual input. So for this year, rather than just hurry up and select something, we wanted to really take some time and make sure whatever we rolled out next was actually going to stick and stay and be the best option for the district. So over the last year, we met with several, this actually started kind of prior to me even jumping in on this piece due to the registration part, but it started about a year ago. I know Karen and John and Emily and two other people in our tech department had started looking at all of these different options and they all unanimously came back that they thought this was the best option. Well, since we had already spent, we were already so in contract with final forms and we couldn't make a change, we said, okay, well then let's just go ahead since we've got some time because we can't afford to buy another, you know, duplicate, duplicate our efforts for the year, then we'll go ahead and make sure that this is the actual package that we want to allow and it'll give us until a whole year basically to ensure that we're going to do. So when I came back around to actually looking at this because it was one of my goals was to improve the registration process, now that it's been up and running for a year and I've been able to really analyze how it's been going, it's been going wonderful, but I think there are some things that we could definitely do to even improve it more. So I circled back around and I got different people in, in front of us this time so that we can kind of revisit and watch the demo and hear everything and get questions. So we brought in a school secretary, we brought in a principal, an assistant principal, had my email person, myself, it's one, trying to think of all the people who were in there, but we had somebody from every area so that they could give us both positive and if there was any critical feedback, they would do that as well. At the end of the presentation, I sent an email and I said, you know, can you give your thoughts, you know, any feedback on things that we need to look at and do you agree this is the right way to go or do you think that maybe you should circle back and revisit some of these things? But they all loved this software. So I'm going to briefly show you a little bit about what it does. I was able to get a demo from them. So this is obviously a random school district that they use as a demo, but it'll kind of give you an idea of what, what both parents see and what the school district sees on both the new student registration as well as the back to school. So for instance, this is the first page. If you were to be a new student in the district, we, how it works right now is there's like a set of forms that you can go on our website and print out and then you have to yourself either try to go through the model, figure out what you're supposed to put, where you're supposed to put everything. And then you meet, you're supposed to set an appointment and come in and meet with Jake our registrar. Well, a lot of times because some of the forms are quite confusing, they just come in and then it ends up being thirty, twenty-five minute long, you know, meeting per, per kid. And we had over eight hundred registrations last year. So this will be a lot easier because everything that we put into this, we have to fill this portal ourselves. So the district decides what is important, what we need to collect in each new student registration. So when we have this portal, we'll be actually building, so there might be some different forms that we'll see in our portal that might not be in this one or vice versa. But it'll be a step-by-step process for the parent of the new student to be able to go through before they meet with Jake, which will allow the time that he has to meet with registrations to be streamlined as well as it'll be a lot easier for parents. So here's the beginning of one of the new student registrations that we go in and you would, they would read this, they would notice these questions, they would move on, you know, I'll just kind of go through how they, you know, they seem here, but it'll show you, you know, the student's basic information, you can list your emergency contacts and keep in mind, this all goes, everything we allow in here will go directly into emails to Dazzle. So this will also help because right now it's not happening, so everything is manual. Here it talks about people in social and this is all very, they have, we have several sheets that I sent before anyway on handouts, but this is all very protected information. You know, they've got a lockdown really good. So the stuff that you put in here, you can be able to feel safe and it's being secure. So then here's some different things. It'll give authorization, allow us to pick up internet access, they have insurance waivers and there's all these different forms, if they happen to be EDSL, we can select a language, but you'll go through the whole process and at the end it will ask if you want to add another student and if so, it'll already pre-populate everything that you did and just give you certain fields like the name, date of birth and things like that to change, but it pretty much gives you, allows you to just select, so you don't have to basically start a little bit another student. It also has a place on here that I think is pretty cool where we can just upload the student handbook. So depending on what school they select, student handbook should be right there. You have to actually initial that you have received this handbook, so that might also be able to help. We could put policies on there, like maybe the three sixty-five policy or some of these other policies that maybe someone would come back later and say, I didn't know about this policy, I wasn't given this policy. Well, we can add those to this portal, which means they all reset their initial and receive different handbooks and policies. Then we also have a checklist, so it'll tell you, this is what you, you know, if you're done with this part, this is what you still need as an example, will require an original version certificate. So it's going to tell you, okay, when you make your registration appointment, don't forget to bring a copy of your original version certificate in because that's not something that we can upload on here. But there are items that you are able to upload yourself, which is kind of neat too. So if you have a utility bill and you need to do a group of address, you can actually use the app and scan in and it automatically downloads into your file. So it's like a PDF, so it's like all electronic and it's really neat. And it showed it to us, not in demonstrations, I don't know yours, so I can guess that's what it's like. So then after you get to the end, it'll ask you to schedule an appointment. So this one right here will be, I believe, a much nicer way to make appointments than we have right now because we have had some issues with our scheduling system that we have in place right now where people have appointments, but then when we look at the appointment schedule, it's not out there, then they have proof that it, you know, that it's out there. So we've had some issues, we've worked through that. So this actually will be able to make an appointment and then I can show you, it'll end up, you know, a email that there's somebody who's out there, you know, to show you the appointment. So then from our side, you're able to look up, you know, who has applied, you know, who has new students that are out there. And it'll also, how we built it in the background will prompt the registrar, basically say, have you confirmed this? Have you confirmed this? Is there a custody agreement? Is there an IP? Is there, it'll prompt the registrar to ask these questions because that'll be built in in the beginning of that head. So then you can go through and you can, you know, verify all the things that you have to verify on this side. There's the documents that either people scanned in or the person at home gets scanned in if they happen to have that in front of the app and the ability to send it in. So that's, that was the, this is the new student registration board. So that's pretty much it. It'll show you, you can look through and see all of the stuff that you had in on the student, you can upload their picture or you can do the school standardized picture, I don't know, you know, build that and I think we'd do that here. So that would then be put in here. So this is basically creating an electronic key folder, whereas now when they're done, everything is deeper and that key folder has to go from building to building and it just gets bigger and bigger. This will allow us to have electronic key folders that electronically you just say that's, change the permissions in the background and as they move up to another building, the permissions change and the new people who are allowed to see that file and then the old people will drop off. So this will actually reuse a lot of paper, it'll make things a lot more streamlined and there won't be any, you know, humid air so to speak of losing pieces of paper or things becoming missing or anything like that. How can that ever happen? But it will help. It's, it'll be that. So then again, there's a key folder and within the key folder, as the key folder is built, it'll show you, there's the registration packet and the immunization, it'll just build from there and show you everything that's within that key folder. When they're finished completely with the registration process, it'll say an email of the registration person and it'll say, this person just registered here, so information below. And then that is where all the people that we select in the background that needs to get notified. So if there's a specific building, that building will be notified, the registrar will all be notified at the same time. And then supposedly that'll make happy registering. So then in the background, let's see, this is the site administrator background piece, so in the background, when they go in and say, okay, it looks like I got this little new kid. And then you can go through and look wherever they have all their application, you know, and just verify who on here and then everything is done. So that's the new, new school registration piece and then the next piece is the back to school registration piece. So every year, then they've been doing final forms in the last couple of years and then this past year, paper files were pulled. So then it started hopefully next year, bringing it on the central media time. This is what will happen. So it, and it won't look exactly like this because we'll fill ours how we want it to look at Springfield. And they'll basically go in and it helps you everything you need, all of the addresses in Springfield are pre-populated, so you will, there's a lot of easy things that will happen, you just scroll down, select your address and it helps you kind of pump you along for you. It'll tell you there's other steps, you have the opportunity to view, you'll have the opportunity to appear, it has the opportunity to save it as a PDF if they want that information or something to show that they, the baggage in the checklist, it shows you the group of residency. If we choose that, there are add-ons that I can mention here in the view that there's some really good add-ons that might be something that a visitor would be interested in looking at. And then also it'll give us a dashboard, just kind of neat because it'll show the buildings and it'll show the central registration. It'll show you, okay, you have six hundred students coming into your building this year, five hundred and fifty of them have already done the, you know, back to school, you know, updating, you know, using the things we have and doing some of the changes. But you can easily go through and say, that was changed and you don't have to spend much time. Those changes will prompt, but you have to do through for that. So here's your really nice, so it gives you a really nice dashboard of all the activities that's happening in the room. And again, all of these permissions are set up in the background. There's a lengthy process to set everything up. I believe I was asked that. So there is a planning process, there's a three week, twenty-three hour district process of setting up workflows and how everything looks that way. There is three weeks, a twenty-four hour deliverable workload that you work directly with the registration gateway. And there's an implementation process and then after that, there's the deployment. They do the train the trainer, which is kind of one-two where they'll train a certain key stock and then those train other people and the names train other people. So that would, you know, it's not the one person having to try to make appointments with everybody, multiple people will kind of, it'll kind of grow so that more people can become trainers and then train as new people come in. So it's really neat. I'm really excited about it. I, I've watched a few demos now. I know John has seen the demo. He's here. I'm not sure if anyone else here has seen the demo. But it's really, it's really interactive and all, and some of the add-ons like I was mentioning that I think are really neat. There is, there's like a phone capture piece that I was telling, I think I mentioned it as part of this, but it's where you can upload things and send things back and forth to the teachers and to staff or, you know, back and forth between the staff and the teachers and the parents. Also it has an online form creation and distribution. So you have the ability to, and it has a lot of these templates in the background and you can also do new ones and save them within the software and then you can literally select, I wanted to go to every single kid in grade five. And then it goes to the parent and there's many different deliverable ways that it can go to the parents too. It can go via text, it can go via, they have an app, so you can be notified on your app. It's really neat and they could, they could be flyers, they could be notices, important notices, say you can't come back to school if you don't turn in your immunizations, it could be something like that or it could be however they want to use it. It could be newsletters, I don't know. And I know we've got some other avenues where they do those things, but it is a way that you can directly hit every family and you can specify exactly which building, which group of kids that you would like these things to go, go to. There's another add-on that you can do, these add-ons range in price, so obviously would have to be a real, a real necessary need for that, but they have the ability to tell you if you are, I'm trying to think how to say this, if you want to do an address verification. So in this district, to my knowledge, we have not ever had one. So once you are registered, you could move and as long as nothing goes home or comes back or anything, you can just go here. And you know, I've heard at times that there could be people, lots of people at different bus stops possibly making out and taking kids back and forth and that could just be a babysitting issue or what have you, but I know in our forward district, we did do an extensive address verification and found that a lot of students were not living in our district anymore. And the kind of cool thing about this add-on is that, I actually can't believe it actually can happen this way, but this add-on actually goes out and checks with the US Postal Service and it also checks with credit card transactions. So it's actually able to say, well, that's weird because you've had heaps of delivery four times at this address in the last month, but that's not the address we have on file. And it will actually, it's kind of crazy, but it would actually help if in fact there were people who were living here and this is one of those types of districts that people would love for their kids to go, so I could see how that could potentially happen, you know, try to keep your kids in the school if they don't, they're messing with you here. So that is an add-on. That add-on as an example is three thousand dollars a year for that add-on piece. There is the phone capture upload that I was telling you about. That one is also, it's a thousand dollar setup fee and it would be three thousand and it's fifty, fifty cent per kid. They have the ability for teachers and or secretaries to add documents and send it to a parent. So that's kind of cool too. If you, or maybe they want to send a homework assignment or something, they can upload it in there and send it to that fourth grade class. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities that would take a while to kind of, you know, check out all the different things in the software to do. But the basic piece of the software that's already in that cost is the fact that you can have your electronic key folders and everything. It's streamlined, and it makes the process super quick and easy. So I'm excited about it. The cost, year over year, is only $16,990 for the actual premium package. Now, that doesn't include the add-ons. But we're already, we have already in the budget $19.50, because we've been paying final forms each year. So that would actually be the change. Year one, there is an $8,000 additional cost for support, and that's to get the whole process implemented. I do have the CPS rebate money that I know I've told you more about several times. It's the revenue that I receive through rebates by using virtual credit cards to pay some of our county's payable bills rather than writing checks. And you receive a rebate off a percentage of the cost of the total charge or the total bill that we use the virtual credit card for. So that amount is around $60,000 to $70,000 a year. So I would be able to use some of this money for any of the additional add-ons we wanted to look at piloting. And then that way, in the future, if we didn't really think that worked out, it still would be any general fund money for any of the overages. And the money that's already in the budget would pay for the actual software. I'm excited about it. So I wanted to share with you guys a sneak spot.
So what's the process going to be if a parent regarding does not have access to the computer? If we maintain that and then?
We actually have computers in the registration office, so they can still be directed to do that process at one of those stations. And I think we also have, we have, we have, we have beliefs.
Right, we could, yeah, we could set up either some of the older laptops, or even a Chromebook here or there. Because it's all network-based, so it would just need the Chromebook or something.
So we could definitely make combinations if that were to happen. And then why don't we just permanently between the process? And we could actually log under the title, you know, both of those processes for it. So it still stays in the system, there's no outliers where you determine two different things still. We either have a computer available for them, or that Jacob walked through that process at the registration office.
You answered most of my questions through email ahead of time, but a few questions came up from this. We're not breaking a contract with final forms, because that's done. But we're continuing our athletic piece of it. So how much is it for the athletic?
Their piece is like $3,500 a year, but that's separate. The cost I made was only for the process.
Oh, the $19.5 is just, okay, okay.
The other cost was additional because that comes out of the budget. This is the cost that comes out of the general fund for the forms. Now, I've heard wonderful things about final forms in terms of the athletic piece.
Right, right. It was the other piece that was difficult.
Yeah. I have yet to hear of another company that could even compete with final forms in terms of what they offer on the athletic side. So I was very upfront with Austin, I was like, no, I'm not trying to take away your program, you're welcome. I just think this makes so much more sense.
Yeah, this seems much more user-friendly.
Because it takes 100% of automated. If you have a student, if a parent gets on and puts some address change in, it's live with our unit data, because it's integrated. So it will literally update that minute. It doesn't take all nine, it doesn't take a few minutes, it's live. So if something, if we had to get a one call out right away, and you just happened to get in this morning and change your contact information, you would get it, that one call, because it's instant, because it pulls from Dazzle. It feeds into Dazzle, and when Dazzle is where the information for not one call anymore, it's going to be instant connect.
Instant connect, yeah.
Right, so it's automated.
So as you go year to year to update, do you just have to go through and click like, nothing's changed, nothing's changed? If you're like going from fourth grade to fifth grade?
That's what it appears when I'm looking at the demo. They say that we can design a how or move on.
Please design it like that.
Yeah, and we want to force people to answer all the questions. My third is basically says, nothing has changed, you know, then you can just click the button, nothing has changed, and then say, yes, I agree, nothing has changed. And move on.
Okay.
Because I think that is their thing, is we have to, you know, I think.
Re-enter.
Yeah. So the only thing that would ever happen is if we added a new form or added another thing. As an example, this military identifier, this is something that's due this year. It's going to be a new requirement in this for the end of this year. So we had a meeting earlier this week trying to say, okay, how are we going to get out to parents? That we need an answer from every single parent in the district, whether their parent, one of their parents are active in the military. Because it's going to be an indicator of the report card, or it's going to be our report card. So, but starting next year, that's one of the items that are already built in with this app. It's just a matter of checking that we don't have that. And there's all kinds of forms we can have as many as we want. Like I know you had asked me about a few of them, but.
Yeah, that jumped out at me in options.
Yeah, and there's so many. And they say that not only those forms, but anything that we choose to build can also be added.
Do they have a good help desk if the district is having issues?
Very large, and it's national. So I was asking about some of the schools that exist in Ohio. So we have Little Miami, Cincinnati Public, so if they can, since they have public, with as many students as they have, they should be able to handle us. You know, Westerville, Dublin, Lakota, Mount healthy Franklin, Springfield, Wyoming, Middletown Northwest. I think there's a lot of districts, very large, some small, so they can tailor it however we like it. So that made me feel better seeing some of these quite large districts using this system, to where I thought, okay, well, they have, you know, that's a lot to build. So I don't think that it will take us as long. Plus, we have all of these different platforms that we can even kind of go through, look at what they have, and maybe not have to start from scratch. We'll be able to maybe hear some of theirs if they can like how they're set up it. Because most districts require the same documents, original version, proof of residency, you know, the different IP. What you have, anything that you may have. Those districts in Ohio have the same thing. So maybe some that ask for a few more things. If we had a technology useful, and we can build that in here, so you can say, you know, which will be used. We can probably build in, do we want my authorization for us to have a PTO, you know, be on the PTO's directory list? I mean, we could probably build any of those things in with that. Because it doesn't have to be tied to just the forms that are out there.
My other question is, is the purpose of this also, like you were talking about the cumulative folders moving with the student? Do teachers still have cumulative folders that have like work samples in them?
I'm sure they do.
That work? Is the purpose of this to make those electronic, and then they travel electronically? Or do we still want paper of those? I don't, I'm just wondering, is that also a way to simplify?
We could do that. So that is a piece that was asked. We also asked, well, what, we're going to have like all these paper files, and then we're going to start new files from here on. So they're going to have like two key folders. So we talked about how, you know, and it is an extra cost. It wasn't very much. I'd have to go back and look at the exact cost. But there is a way to go backwards and take them and go through a scanning process, and scan those into those key folders, and then it would just go back here.
Gosh, it seems like that would be so nice for the teachers to be able to just pop the kid's file open and see from kindergarten through if they've been in the district that long.
It's the automated piece of school district. We've had paper for so long, and I get the need for paper, and a lot of our required items, why it's related items force us to keep paper forever in some cases. But as an example, like for Scott here, I brought Strategic Solutions, so I'm sure you guys remember that. To where now, we used to have a full entire room full of nothing but AP checks, just, I mean, because you have to keep them for 10 years. And so this software, through Strategic Solutions, allowed us to, they came in and they scanned all of our documents. And then they gave us all these abilities and different ways for us to search them. The Ohio Historic School Society approves that as one, as an original document. And so we were actually able to get rid of all of our paper, and it's all digitalized now. And the auditors love it, because when they come, they say, I need these 100 checks. And then I just say, okay, well, here's your auditor login, that's good for, you know, 30 days. And they just pull everything they need, and, you know, there's no manually filing, because they create PDFs. So you can send a PDF and slide it into a folder, and then they have a whole audit folder. So this is something similar like that. It's helping with automation, it'll reduce paper, it'll make things easily go from one building to the next. And you can give nurses access, you can give counselors access, you can give all these different people access without them having to come and pull files or whatever. Look, you know, try to figure out where everything is, so.
Maybe that'd be a neat job for some students that want a summer job, that, you know, you're not paying somebody that's making a higher wage income. But a summer job for a student to scan work samples might be a neat way to catch our files up electronically.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're thinking of, too, is how can we go about it? We have to be really careful with protected information, a student identifying information. So we have to really be careful on how we do that. But as long as we publish a good process, it would be good for, you know, to be able to have, very expensively, be able to backscan that, you know, a lot of information in these key folders. So I'm excited about it.
So I have one more question, and that was a good segue. Is this company hosting any data, or is this all stored locally?
It's hosted, but it's spoken hosted for us, that's our page site. So it's out there, it's filed, but then in secret, we have a fee, and we have to be spoken for all of our programs that are like this, for them to have those firewalls in place. And I know, I am so bad with the firewalls and how spoken protects everything, but.
But this isn't anything different than what we typically do for unprepared patients. Okay, thanks.
No other questions on that? Now is the fun part, it's the five-year. This is a little alternative, and it's not a PowerPoint, so when I'm trying to explain, it goes and shows the top of the page, and then it's different. The participation is going to be on the top of the page, but I mean, still can see the bottom of the page. But I don't know of any other way to work that. Do you know any tricks on this?
No, just keep on scrolling.
Zoom on the floor.
All right. So for the five-year forecast, this is, if you guys remember, a few years ago, I did like a long hesitation, it took forever. And then at the end, it was just like a lot of information. So the board asked me, if we could make it a little more simplified, and say, what were the major changes? What made the things that changed since the last forecast was approved? So how I say, so again, this is the same format that I've used down for a couple of years, is I will show you basically year over year, which is called a forecast. And I'll show you year over year and explain the outliers. And then I'm going to give you some detail on how these rumors came about. So basically, the first one is, you know, so the first one is the forecast compared for fiscal 18. So in May, the forecast that I was forecasting for May is in this first column. Now for fiscal 18, for this this year. So now that we're in October, and since things have changed since May, you will see now, I have another column that shows what we are predicting now for this this year. So then the next column is the differences, and then any percentage and variances of that. So I have three pages, because I have one from the May forecast for fiscal 18, one for the May forecast for fiscal 19, and one for fiscal 20. So basically, the major changes that we've had in, we don't know today, up here on the first column, is we had a little bit more new construction. And so I want to definitely make sure I explain that. So I won't explain it here, because I have it in my notes to explain next. But there has been some increase in new construction on some of our old levees, and I'll explain that. Then also next is this amount here, the unrestricted grants in aid. We, and I'll also explain this in more detail here in a second, but our unrestricted grants in aid, I had projected in our five-year forecast for May and before, that we were going to receive about a 5% increase in state funding. And that was based off of historical looks of what the governor has, and not just the governor, but the House and Senate, the final version that's been approved the last several years. So in the last several years, we received a 10 and a half percent increase, a six and a quarter, and two seven and a half percent increases from the state. So I thought of being conservative by saying, okay, well, we've got a lot of unfunded formulas that they haven't given us, that they owe us. So I would say 5%, hopefully it'll get to six, or seven, or eight, or some of these other numbers that they had given us in the past. Well, about two days before the final budget bill was passed, it went from 5.5, which was what was on the floor, down to 3. So even though we did receive money in Springfield, and a lot of districts lost money, I was projecting that we were going to get 5%. And we only ended up with 3%, which means I have to remove money from our forecast now, because I had more money in our forecast than they ended up giving us. So right now, at the end of this fiscal year, there will be $3 million in unfunded formula that the state owes us still, that they aren't able to give us. So basically, it's a $17 million, if you take your cost per pupil or your allocation per pupil and multiply it by how many students we have, they are unfunding us by about $3 million.
Eric, can you share with the board briefly, like you shared with me? Why did you go five and a half instead of just saying zero? And then the 3% would have been great, why did you do that?
That's funny that you asked that, because my first year here, we had a 10 and a half percent increase. And so when I was doing my five-year presentation, David Termany said, why do you have 5% in there? We got 10 and a half. Why didn't you put 10 and a half in every single one? I said, well, first of all, there's no way they're going to be able to sustain giving us 10 and a half percent each year. And the tricky part is, is you have no idea what's going to happen with these budget budgets. Every two years, they meet, and depending on how the state is performing and how revenue is for the state, they either give more funding for schools, or they take money away. Or they have other initiatives that they're spending more money on, and some are spending less. So for me, I would never suggest to put in zero, because to me, that's kind of like hiding money. I mean, yeah, I'm basically saying, all of a sudden, oh, look, $500,000, or look, a million dollars. I had no idea that was coming, especially when you use a forecast to project out when you may need new money, or when you need to make other decisions about reducing things, because it looks like we're not going to have any money. So if I were to put in zero, I just don't think that's fiscally responsible to put in zero when I know we will get something, because the state owes us a lot of money that they're not able to provide us. Now, 5%, I thought that was being conservative, because the lowest we had received was five years before that, which was six and a quarter. So, I mean, having two seven and a half percent years, plus a, okay, two seven and a half percent years, a six and a quarter, and a 10 and a half, five seemed pretty reasonable. And it was five and a half up until two days before they voted on the budget bill. So it looked like, I was like, yes, we're even going to get a little bit more than I was hoping. But then at the very last hour, they came back and approved three. So fortunately, that means that I drew a little bit of money.
Is that three only for 18, or is that what, you're going to apply?
Three, 18 and 19. So what I did was, I had had 5% in each year forecast, so what I had to go do is put in 3% for the next two years. And I went ahead and just put 3% in for the rest of them, because I don't want to assume that they're going to jump back up to five. Because obviously, maybe they're trying to go to a trend of, you know, giving less to schools. And some schools lost a lot. So we were still fortunate that we received more money, but it just wasn't as much as I was expecting, and we were going to get.
So it wasn't that ours went down and others went up, everybody's pretty much went down?
There were some that made out, but there were some that lost a lot. So it's based off of your valuation. So they take your valuation, I have that in the other presentation that I turned into the state. It's based off of your fact of your valuation, so your wealth index, basically. And then there's a, so they take, they take the number, and they say, okay, your per pupil valuation is this. You are X amount above or below the state average, and then that determines how much percent you get for your index. While with us, we're 186% above the median, the median average for the state, so that hurts us. But because we are capped, which means we are not getting what the state owes us, they give us a percentage increase so that we're getting a little bit of that money that they owe us, but they can't give us, but it's not enough. So that's why I said, after the end of this year, we're still going to have $3 million in unfunded money. So even though they gave us a little bit more, they still owe us a lot more. So, you know, that's frustrating, but then there's also a lot of schools who, they get a lot larger percentage, where we get $2,200 a kid. So right now, this year, the per pupil allocation for the state is $6,010. We get $2,212 per kid. So as you get wealthier locally, you get more from the state. And that's how they work that. So I had produced some money from the forecast, and you'll see that in each one of the slides. You'll see here that since May, we've added, this shows 309,000. It's actually larger than that. We did a couple of other small, non-operating, that went down a little bit. But where we added, the kind of participating. um, that went down a little bit. But where we added, the paid and participate revenue to the general fund, and I don't know if you guys remember, the board approved that not too long ago, to move the expenses and the revenue back to the general fund for athletics. So that's why that's different from May, because the board had not approved that until just a month or two ago. So we didn't know in May that that was going to happen. So that's what the issue is there.
So where do we see the corresponding offset?
Um, you'll see the rate payment, the salary.
Okay.
The benefits are a little more outlier, but that's because it went down, and the difference is still in that. Um, so basically, the difference between May and October, we have added four hundred and twenty-four thousand overall, which seems like a lot of money, but it's actually eight tenths, oops, eight tenths of one percent. So the variance is quite a small figure, it's been a lot more, um, all around. So for personnel, um, so for expenditures, we have increased four hundred forty-eight thousand eighty-seven in overall expenditures for personnel. This makes up a lot of things, so we can't just say that it's one thing. But I, I do explain, um, in detail, which is why I didn't want to spend too much time on this, because I do explain in detail, um, some of the revenues and expenditure changes. Um, and our supplies materials, I showed going down, um, from the May forecast to the October forecast. Um, so you can see overall, our expenditures line up overall fifty-nine thousand. Not a lot of that, because we took out the transfer there, um, to athletics, since athletics are now in the general fund, we no longer have to move that transfer over to athletics. Um, so overall, we have an increased cash balance projected at four hundred thirty-two eighty thousand dollars to return that this year between May and October. Have any questions?
What was it, Eric?
Go ahead.
On capital outlay, was there a project that you passed up on?
Yeah, I have, no, I have that in my notes. There were some items that we purchased in fiscal seventeen that we weren't supposed to, we didn't anticipate buying until fiscal eighteen, and had to buy them in fiscal seventeen, which means we removed that from fiscal eighteen, and we spent that in fiscal seventeen. So I explained that in a minute or so. Um, so basically, I won't go through each one of these, but this is the cubicles that you can see again. There is the rest of the, um, you might have had to renew, um, state funding, swipe increases again, um, for the new construction. Um, and then right there again, is the state revenue that we added in the forecast, and we add up for each year, so that's why I'm looking at each year, um, as well as the personnel, so that would be the supplementals. Um, then there are I do pointed to, that there's, we, we, insurance benefits, and what we did in May, and those two, again, the transfer, which is why I didn't say that there. So overall, we added a hundred fifty-eight thousand to our cash balance from both of the projected in May, and now we're projecting in October for fiscal nineteen, and then for fiscal twenty. Now, for fiscal twenty, you can see our ending cash balance is, we're projecting adding two hundred and nine thousand for fiscal nineteen, or for fiscal twenty, between the May forecast and now the October forecast. And some of this, you'll see down here in all the factors, and this is the revenue that we added for, um, starting in twenty-four, um, substitute levy, if it does pass, because I wanted to be able to show what increased revenue that I at least proposed that we may receive, based on the new construction estimate that we had seen in the past. So that's only one year, it's a small amount, but you'll see in a little bit later, I've got fiscal twenty-one and twenty-two million that's in there as well, so just, but that would be something I want to talk about. Um, okay, so this is where I said that I would be explaining in a little more detail, some of the, some of the numbers that you saw in the first three years of forecast comparisons. So, um, our revenue has improved due to valuation, approximately thirty million dollars so far. So, you know, we've been hearing a lot of these things too, and I've seen a lot of these things on social media, and so I wanted to try and explain this. The very first, every time, for all of our ongoing continuing levies that we already have on our books, which is all of our levies that are pre-nineteen fifty, all the way up here to nineteen eighty-eight. Um, the first year, new construction for those levies, the first year that those come on, we do receive new construction revenue for those levies. Not the, not the renewal levy, not the, the levy that's pre-proposed as a substitute continuing. We did not receive anything but that flat dollar amount for that levy. But all of our other continuing operating levies that we have in place, we do receive new construction the first year it comes on to the tax duplicator. Then the second year and after, House Bill ninety-twenty reduces our tax rate, so that we cannot receive any more money than what was passed by voters. So when I say, you know, we receive some increased revenue due to new construction, I want to make sure it's clear, but that's only one year at a time, and you see that you receive it, if two hundred homes were built, those levies would allow us to get revenue for that year. The second year, they would, we wouldn't get that, and they would reduce the tax rates, and we wouldn't get that anymore. But then, say that year, two hundred new other homes were built, that first year, we'll receive the revenue, and then it'll come off due to House Bill ninety-twenty, and so on and so on. The renewal levy that we have on as a substitute does not receive any new construction revenue period. So I just want to always make sure I explain that. Um, so that, um, so because of, and if I know, you know, the new construction, the first year, something comes on the tax duplicator, because we received a thirty million dollar fiscal valuation, valuation, we have added approximately four hundred forty-three thousand in revenue, we do see that year over year on those forecasts compared to that, whereas adding a little bit of revenue each year for those. Um, let's see, um, and also, it's important, just like I explained with the renewal levy, that as our valuation increases, which it did to over a billion seventy now, um, as our valuation increases, they reduce our tax rates, um, so that we only collect what was passed by voters. So right here, our current renewal levy that's on the books, that was eight point seven eight when it was passed in two thousand thirteen, um, it lowered from eight point seven eight to eight point three eight to eight, and now we're going to make it to seven point five, so starting in January, we'll be receiving seven point five. So then you would take your value of your hole, you would times that by thirty-five percent to get your, um, to give the taxable value, and then you would multiply it by seven point five, and then that would come up with how much the renewal levy cost you. And then as I said, as I've been increasing, that would be now the top.
And that valuation, that's the cumulative, um, commercial, as well as present?
That valuation is, or that, the valuation, and you're talking about the billion seventy debt, that's our total district cost.
District valuation.
Yes. Um, I, this one right here, I don't have to stick on too long, because I already had this in the forecast, because I knew this in May, so I would say it again, and I just wanted to explain again that we had added revenue in our May forecast, and it's still state current, um, today, because there was never any, um, tax appeal filed. So this pub utility, um, pub utility for Texas USTR, um, it increased twenty-four billion dollars in value, did. Um, and so therefore, that did add four hundred twenty-seven thousand, um, in revenue from seventeen, and from one point one million from fiscal eighteen, and so on. So that helped us a lot. So, I mean, these kind of things are things that you can just never know. I mean, you all of a sudden, then reevaluate, um, the taxation part, and reevaluate, and start, hey, wait a second, you guys are worth a lot more now, you need to be paying taxes on that. Um, and then, and then it goes down with the county honor, and gets passed on to us. So that actually really helped us, because we were, we were not looking even near what we're looking now, what's going to happen. So, um, another thing about this forecast that from May that's different is fiscal twenty-two has now came on. So when I was looking at early numbers for fiscal twenty-two, prior to coming on, it was a very scary number. Um, this revenue right here, over one point one million dollars per year, actually made us go from like six million dollars in the hole to one point one million dollars now, because in fiscal twenty-two, so. And then down here is where I better explain what I said earlier about the, uh, state funding. Um, this is where I discuss the fact that I had had it a five percent cap, and it had been free, it was five point five, um, until the last May forecast ended up lowering the level, um, at the very last minute. So I had to remove three hundred eighty-two thousand from fiscal eighteen, and then I improved eight hundred thousand, um, from fiscal nineteen and on, because now I have a three percent cap instead of, um, the five percent that I had originally. Um, so you can see, I had explained a little bit there too, we actually are receiving approximately three million dollars, but we're being unfunded actually, at approximately three hundred, three million dollars in eighteen, and one point two in ninety-two, and that's another four million that goes up, so that would, and that's what we know. Um, and I also had a question on this too, um, that I want to make sure that we agree. We do not receive any money for C C P. That is an unfunded mandate. We do not receive a dollar for that. That was, uh, implemented two years ago, and, um, that just basically put it on the backs of the schools, and then eventually put it on the backs of taxpayers, um, because that was a mandate that they provide no funding for. Um, property tax allocation, that's the rollback of homestead credits. Um, that's also another important thing that I was talking about when we've been having these evening levy meetings, is the fact that the rollback of homestead credits are for any existing levy in two thousand thirteen and before. After two thousand thirteen, any new money levy does not receive these rollback of homestead credits from the state. They eliminated that in the two thousand thirteen biennial budget that was approved. Um, so one of the main things that I state is that this levy that is on the ballot is considered a substitute levy. It is not a new levy. It is not a new tax. Therefore, the rollback of homestead credits do remain, so those will stay. Um, any new money levy outside of that, down road, would not receive that twelve and a half percent. And basically, those two credits are a ten percent if you're a homeowner, and two and a half extra percent if you live in the hole you own. So if you rent it, you're not getting that two and a half percent. If you're renting it out to someone else, if you live in that hole, and you occupy it, then you get that two and a half percent. Um, all of the revenues, you'll see here that it has increased three hundred thirty-three thousand for fiscal eighteen on, because they added paid and participate fees, um, in the general fund, and then also, as being talked about earlier, the senior expenditures, so we did remove the, um, the transfer, so that way, those two amounts pay approaching double the bills that had been added to the general fund. So for personnel, so some of those personnel costs, when we were talking about, um, they were increased, um, as shown here, we were under in May. So if you remember the October forecast and the May forecast, I had actually removed half a million dollars, um, out of the forecast for May, from the prior October forecast, because we were so under the salary. Well, even after the May forecast, we still gave in a hundred and seventy thousand beyond that, the budget, which means we were six hundred and seven thousand on the budget, um, for salaries. And a lot of that, I mean, there's so many different things. We had a lot less overtime, we didn't have, um, any snow pay, and hopefully that's going to continue. But there was a lot of things, attrition, um, we did have some resignation, and absence, and things like that, to where the cost would then be diverted over purchase service, so that you wouldn't see them in this area. There's a lot of things that it caused, um, you know, all year long, the EBIT flows. Um, but in eighteen, we do have an overall increase of four hundred forty-eight thousand. Some of that is due to the athletic supplementals, but like I said, we also removed the transfer, and we also increased the revenue by bringing the revenue to the general fund, so that offset a lot of that. And then we did have some one-time staffing things that the board had approved since May, um, that caused a, a overage in that area. But overall, because of the savings that brought it down, um, the overage that we were expecting to have, so it's basically been a little washed for the year.
Can you explain what you mean by the, how the three thirty-three and the four forty-eight work together?
The overall increase for all staffing had added four hundred forty-eight thousand to the budget, we hired a, um, we had a few of the staffing things, the one-time staffing, where they were by the board. And then, so with those one-time staffing things, it would have been higher than four forty-eight, because you know, three hundred and some thousand on the four, four, um, supplementals.
So that has nothing to do with our transfer of the, oh, I thought you were saying it has nothing to do with the transfer, but that's what we...
No, I'm saying that, I'm just saying the transfer and the increase in revenue will offset, I have a slide later, because I wanted to make sure I showed it for, um, about the funding piece, because I know it's a concern, we wanted to make sure we were really watching to make sure there's going to be no general fund costs by moving athletics to the general fund, and I do have a specific thing on that here in a second.
I think that, when I, when I was reviewing this, the, oh, sorry. When I was reviewing this, the, the question that I had, and when I had asked this in email, is just wanting to be totally transparent with, um, the personnel cost, is just that, like, our E S C salaries, if it's a salary, I'd like to call it a salary, and I get it, that like our special ed, um, one of the directors is hired through the E S C, but that is a full-time position for the district. So that is under personnel. So with that, I would consider that part of personnel. It's, so it's under purchase service, but it's... They're not our employee, but I, I guess I'm just looking at, I, I totally get that. Um, but as we're looking at whole big picture of how much our personnel is, you know, so maybe, including that somewhere, that our personnel...
I can do an analysis for sure, of all of our contractor services staff. Um, what's a little difficult is we have, um, a lot, we did those, we had a lot of tuition-based items where, um, something else, we're paying tuition for someone else to educate, whereas if they were here, we would be paying somebody to educate. So we would have to kind of define, is that considered a staff? Because if they're going out, someone else is educating them, but we're paying for that cost, so is that considered a staff?
Yeah, I'm more so considering, like, like, the specialized position that we've hired, like, the gubs, that's what I was referring to, you know, that's more so, if that's not a, a position that we could hire here, if we're not equipped to, um, educate, if it's something we need to outsource, I don't consider that part of, um, our full-time staff here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, like, forward edge, where we have three people, seven of them being on staff here, we pay a purchase service cost of one hundred ninety-nine thousand for one and a half people that we receive from forward edge. I mean, I get what you're saying, and that would be easy to do analysis of just those people, but we have like O T and P T, um, where they're doing, you know, multiple buildings, and I don't know that you could just say, well, we can hire those people here, but that's not necessarily the case, because how we have it is, is it's like, if you look at our E S C bill, it'll say, um, twelve and a half days. Well, you're like, well, what does that mean? Well, there's, there might be six people, but they're all splitting it all over. So if we hired one person, that person isn't going to be able to split themselves up and cover all of those days. There's multiple people that are...
So could you just maybe do a schedule that has onsite educator costs that would include salving, plus...
Yeah, that would be, I mean, that's what I think is difficult. We have some, and we have some coaches, and it's like, okay, well, they're not really staff, but they are coaching staff, so they're training staff. So we would just have to define what you would want it to look like, and then, yeah, we'd absolutely, because I, I figured probably around three million of our costs, of our purchase service costs are due to contractor service people.
So with that, if we are hiring, like, I know when we hired the specialized person that was, you know, the board approved that, if there's anybody hired through the E S C, is that something that's, I know that we have, we approved that in, was it May, or something like that, do we approve that for any positions through the E S C that would go under that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Every E S C contract is approved by the board, and it stays intact until, within that school year, until it changes our mandate, and then we change our mandate, and we get a new contract. And then we usually just highlight what's changed, and or, you know, say, um, we had to hire this, or, as an example, I had that in my schedule for under purchase service, we had to move the transition to a new classroom, we didn't have a choice on that. So the board still approved it, but it was one of those things where we didn't really have a choice, because it was indifferent, so we was educating them to where they're educating them.
Okay, thank you. I thought we were still...
So how fluid is that? Is it, is that something that...
Emily can smile really big.
That you, you know, it makes sense if it's all set for a year, and then, but if you had to go in and were constantly changing it because of different things that we may ask the E S C to provide, well, that's probably could be onerous, as hard as it may work. But that's...
It is, but it's also required by the E S C. It is, but it's also required by the ESC because when, as an example, I mean, without using specifics, but if we have a child who in and they need to go into the social communications classroom and you look at our ESC bill, it says we have five students in the social communications classroom for this dollar amount. Well, now we have six, but the dollar amount's changed. So then the ESC expects us to go back and have the board approve that now we are going to be paying for six students. Um that happens all year long, whether it's between one of the other programs like that, um it happens all year long. So you'll see several um ESC contracts come before you in this, in any given year.
So that's my point, it's for, it changes. I'm just saying, in your reporting to the board, I don't know if we need to have a little detail every time it change, we know we approve it, but I mean, it's a.
Yeah, I mean, I like adding, it's my five-year.
It's true.
It's two times a year.
Yeah, five-year negotiation, I'm trying to say, um at the beginning of the year, our purchase service contracted staff equal of twenty-two point five people, now it's thirty people. And you know, each one of those, you would have already approved along the way. But it was trying to give you an idea of all these things you're approving every single morning, meaning of the term filing, you know, what the effect was for that, so. Um our benefits, um we saw some reductions in our benefits and that was because we were protecting a seven percent increase in our benefits. Uh they came in only five, so it was more nice to see that um that reduction came in there, especially when we're the second highest loss ratio of our eighty-seven schools that we can see. So for them to be able to keep our increase to only five percent is really good. I do have an eight percent in the forecast um for the future, just because I don't want to anticipate that we are now going to be five all the time because then we might have some giant increases in the cost. Um we do have a reduction of eighty thousand in there because starting in January one, we are appointing from the board portion of the HSA provisions of their deductibles for fifty, fifty, and forty-five, fifty-five. So that means employees will be picking up um five percent more, the boards will be picking up five percent less, which is a reduction of eighty thousand dollars for those. Um the rest of it stays the same, one two percent for us here, it's one point four five percent, and I think there's a lot of seven that might not be able to change on that.
So that's for the old negotiations?
That's the old negotiation agreement, that will end June thirtieth, so we're going to be starting negotiations in January. Um so, um that's also something, I'm glad you said that, but something that I want to make sure I express here. Um so I know you would ask me, I just put the thing on. I know you would ask me, but we do have the staff in groups and entries posted um for this one nineteen through twenty-two, because only have staff built in, because that's by law. They have to forego that for us to be able to legally take that out of our forecast. Um and so I have to keep the staff in there, and then also add a half a percent, that equals about ninety thousand for lateral moves. A lot of our staff is young, we hired at zero, so most of our staff is young. And so as they go through and get more education, um then they move legally, they have, we have to move them laterally across. So we have about ninety thousand dollars a year built anticipated for that happening. Other than that, there is no percentage increases in our five-year forecast for this one, like figure twenty-two for raises for staff. So anything that were to come from negotiations um starting July one is not in the forecast, other than the steps. So that's important to know, especially when you see our five-year forecast at the end, um to just know that there are always incremental laws that are not allowed to happen during that.
In this last year, negotiations, it was a three-year negotiation and it was two percent, two percent, three percent in the staff.
And it's approximately um about three hundred thousand per percent.
Oh, that's helpful, okay.
I mean, it'll vary year over year because then as your staff is higher, then the next year percentage is on the higher number and so on, so it's not going to be that, but that's a proxy measure of staff. Um I did explain this earlier, but I did say that there was an addition from specialized coordinator. So I do at least highlight what you guys are adding when you have approved specialized coordinator from the ESC and also the transition living classroom through the ESC. This one was quite a surprise, um after the May forecast, we got a meeting that said that um this program that GUBs was running, which means these students that were our students were unenrolled from our district and they were going to GUBs in this transition living classroom. So the best of my knowledge, um the transition living classroom is where you are a grade twenty-three student that have met the criteria to graduate, but you forego your diploma because you, you're not quite ready socially or what have you to come out. So therefore, they enter this transition living classroom. Well, GUBs was audited, they were, it was determined that they weren't able to run that program anymore. So the ESC had to bring that program back in house. Um that was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase that we were not anticipating, that that wasn't required. So that was an addition and so was the specialized coordinator position, um we did. Um we also had a slight addition in forward, just recently due to the resignation, Emily, in order for us to be doing this in a year, so we'll see that also as well, um as part of our increase. Let's see, our community schools transfer, I have it in here, seven fifty-nine, but this is actually the assumption that's built in the forecast. It's changed so much during the year now that everything counts. I mean, I, I was telling you guys before back in October that I had in the forecast, um it's like six hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And then all of a sudden, it was eight hundred and forty, like within a difference of one month. Um and they just, it's just the ebb and flows of people coming, leaving our district, going to these community schools, coming back, dropping out, whatever's happening. But it goes up and downs throughout the year. So I, I'm anticipating that these are going to be somewhere in the ballpark of what our um kids who are leaving here are going to charter or going to schools is going to cost. As well as these are our residents who are going to another public school, who are open enrollment. So the difference is, is these are charter schools, the, our kids going to charter schools, these are our kids going to another public school, who are either following a teaching pair or they're just um uh going through an open enrollment process for something like to get first fours or for whatever reason why they haven't been to another public school.
Is that a, is that a net number?
Yeah, that's what I told the cost for the whole year.
What about those that are coming to the district from?
We do not accept for enrollment, so it's all outward, we don't have it home. And honestly, I'm super surprised why districts would have open enrollment because the cost of any kids far beyond. I mean, ours is one of the most cost-effective in the state. Most of them spend at eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen thousand to educate, and they get six thousand from the school district. Because they get the full, full per people allocation of six thousand ten dollars, but it might cost them ten thousand. So the only reason I could ever think that a school would have open enrollment is that their numbers are doing really so fast and they don't want to have to cut a bunch of teachers. Maybe they do that process so they can tell the training.
Something called athletics.
Well, it, well, I can see that too, because I know in Wayne, they do open enrollment, a lot of kids go over there to Wayne. But it's surprising because when you look at our G sandwich, which is available for anybody that look at O D E, um the detail that um shows that we have a lot of kids going to Franklin and Carlisle instead of here. And that's surprising to me, but I'm not sure if it's the small town, the small school feel, or what it may be. Um but the largest number of our kids that go through open enrollment are going to Franklin and Carlisle and Wayne, Wayne is all good. Um here's the CCP cost, like I said earlier, we do not receive any revenue from CCP, um from the state or any other source. Um I'm predicting about a half a million dollars this year between tuition and books for CCP. Um I do not have any additional rule reduction yet based on all this new information that they have just recently um offered to schools to be able to put in a permission to say um, starting next school year, you, we can require students to have a three-point O G P A and be radiation free on the ACT or SAT in order to qualify to even take CCP classes. Um so we'll be working with Andrea and John, um in our EMS, in order to look at the most recent report card before the deadline for a child to say, I want to participate in CCP next year. We'll have to look at the most recent report card um to determine if any of our current people, more people who are wanting to take CCP would maybe not qualify. So I don't probably anticipate because most of our students are high, you know, have high G P As. I don't know that it's going to affect us a lot, but by the October forecast, um I would probably be able to tell a little bit better if there were going to be some reductions in CCP due to these provisions, but right now, I mean, I don't know.
Is there a way to go back and do and see if we had had this in place, what it would have done?
We could use historical data to try to guess, but there's new students popping on and falling off every year, and they're not the same people that are taking it each year. Um and certain G P As will fluctuate, they're having that year, not they're having that year. We could probably put something together, but I was just.
I was just trying to see the order of magnitude, because it should be really small.
I think probably really guesses is it's going to be quite small, I think most of them are pretty, like if they're.
Makes sense. How many students?
How many, how many are participating?
This year, in excess of three hundred and sixty, three sixty to three seventy-five, I should say, five different institutions.
It's possible to, like the changes we've made to the uh class rank and those sorts of things that we discussed, that that potentially could have an impact. And students going that way as well.
I guess very true, um with, with it not affecting that.
You don't get that from the G P A.
Um some other things too is um, there's some, there's some legislation talk trying to happen about maybe putting in a part of permissions to say, parents have to pick up half of the textbook costs potentially, whereas, you know, right now, the schools are picking up a hundred percent. Um there's also been talks of potentially trying to say, the school district can direct which schools we use, which would be huge because we have, I think, two schools that are on the floor and others are on the ceiling. And it's a giant cost difference between the two. Um so that could potentially help, but those are just talks and that's not known yet. Um for our utilities, this is something I like to do and I'll update the board until our debt is done. Um when we did this energy conservation project, which I give huge kudos to Tom every time I bring this up because this has never worked, from what I've been told, like it has worked here. Um we have a agreement in place that if in any year, we do not receive the savings that they promised us in their original analysis, all the way through the debt, that they would actually cut us a check for whatever we didn't achieve that they told us that we received. Well, not only has it been handed out in every year, we actually have saved an additional one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so two days. Um in addition to um after we paid the debt payments, the reduction are in the tollings, um after we paid the debt payments, we also have three thousand one hundred eighty-seven thousand on top of that, which is huge. Um because we had all these wonderful improvements done and it's actually, we've actually got one back in addition to that. That's cute, but I'll keep monitoring that because that's the only way we'll know if we ever need to go back and ask for a check. Um I think that's going to happen every year. Um we talked about our special education cost a little bit, how they did increase significantly. Um our G P T outside places, some of these different um transition living classrooms, some recent um things are for reasons for the specialized increases. We're hoping that maybe in the future, we'll be able to reduce some of these costs by some of these, by um reevaluating some of the things that we have going on. But as of right now, um all the same forecast numbers that have been in place, um all over the forecast as well. We did move sixty thousand um to eighteen for instructional coaches. There was a hundred thousand the board had approved back in seventeen for coaches, only four of them used. We did move sixty thousand to this year, and the best of my knowledge that I've seen recently, Andrea is definitely making advantage of that coaching money this year, so.
You bet.
I think we're going to go up by the end of this year. Sorry, it just keeps happening.
So can I ask a question with that? Andrea, do you feel like it's made a big of, big enough of a difference that we need to look at finding a way to put that back into the, the forecast of maybe like fifty thousand a year, or what do you feel like?
Absolutely, because.
Right now, we don't have it in there.
What, what our coaches are able to do is provide various services that Chuck and I, we, we can't specialize in science and social studies and math and E L A at all levels. So when we're using coaches, we're finding that the best of the crop to come in and work with something that they are an absolute expert on. So we can spread that across more people, so I, I would love that.
Do you think fifty thousand, I mean, here you did, looks like forty thousand first year, sixty thousand this year. So what, what do you feel like is really needed to really make the difference in where you're?
Don't, don't say three hundred thousand.
I think fifty would make a nice dent for us. I think, I think it's very reasonable and it would allow us to get experts in in different areas where we need them.
Well, the, the good thing is, is we have the May forecast, so you've already got your money this year.
Right, but I think we need to consider that. So I do think that makes a difference and really hands-on for the teachers to help.
Yes, we'll have the May forecast in place before next school year, right around the time our budgets are being done. So we, if that's something that the board would like to add, we can add that to May forecast since you're already good for, for this school year.
It's working out really well.
Okay, supplies, we have increased supplies. I know um Dana and I talked, and Laura we talked, and there was a staff satisfaction survey. And a lot of the, the things that were pretty consistent in there was they need more resources, they need more, um you know, they're hand on more things um to educate students with. So we did add a little bit of money in the forecast um to make that available. If requests were made for additional um uh teaching materials or classroom materials they may need. Uh also, part of that increase was because a hundred and forty thousand was moved from seventeen to eighteen because they needed to use that textbook money this year and they didn't want to lose it, so we did renew it to eighteen. Um the general supplies weren't down um in seventeen, but like I said, we do have a building budget that we give to each building and we leave it up to the buildings to approve whatever requests are within their building for supplies that they may need in the building. Um and they've been very good, so that's why there's usually statements said in there each year. But with this year, there has been a push with the staff satisfaction survey saying, you know, go ahead and spend it, we have that aside because it's helping to help um the teachers deliver to the students or help the students, and we definitely have a lot to do certainly that.
Are you forecasting that for student bases, for teacher bases, is it by grade level or?
It's just in a little bit for each person's budget, if that was the key words in the book, we'll be adding it to the new now.
I'm sorry, like just in general, when you budget for the buildings, are you, are you just giving a certain hour amount to every teacher and then, you know, like it's up to a building or?
I just added money to each building's budget and make it hourly to however many changes in the budget. Um so, a per amount, you know, one day it was fifty thousand, we give it to each area. Um but then, I'm trying to explain because some of their other budget was reused for other things. So, but it is set aside within the forecast where if some of you need to come and ask any of our, that's these resources that I want. So even if it goes outside what they have in their budget, we do have it available set aside, um if they do need those additional resources. And so we've been kind of marrying the O I P process with that. So as we kind of go through the goals and we want to say, okay, we need to slide resources over here, some of that money is set aside in an area that no one else can touch. There's a fast forward and we just apply it there to maybe get. Um my textbook assumptions, this was a question I had gotten from the set, um from one of the brass. And I said, we do have a large number here in Crystal Twenty, and that's due to subscription renewals for our online text. Um so all the online books that we use, they're pretty much all coming, they're five-year renewals, this is, I guess, the fifth year in Crystal Twenty. So we're doing that here and that's why that number is larger than the other years. And then I think we have some things in twenty-one and twenty-two, your textbook, um you know, master textbook plan that you were expecting by those two years. So those numbers are our pre-approved plan based on what you showed that your needs were.
That large number is a English language arts math number.
Because the online renewals for those.
So is that not, do we do stepping up for the math, because like fourth grade math got new math this year, right?
When we're, when we're looking, we're typically looking at a six through twelve adoption, and then we look at our elementary K through five adoption. So when we adopt, for instance, math, we're looking at the full continuum of secondary math.
So when you just said math, E L A, you're, you were talking six through twelve?
That's the six through twelve adoption replacement. When we, when we looked at the math that we brought into the elementary this year, that was a, that's a free planning. So that, there was no cost to that, that Eureka math is a freebie, bless you.
So is, is it free for this year?
Eureka, Eureka math is free as far as we know forever. Um there was no cost to um moving toward using Eureka math for mapping. We are still using. We are still using ten marks as a tool that does come with a cost. Reflex math does come with a cost, so we're using various resources in the K five realm. Whereas in the six twelve, we have a textbook adoption.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, so if Eureka ends up costing us money, how does that, what do we do?
Eureka's been around, Eureka's been around for a number of years with no cost attached to it. So our assumption is that, we can't say they absolutely will never start charging, but it's been around for several years without a fee.
So do we still pay for ten marks?
Yes, if we, if we decide that ten marks is one of the resources that our teachers are using and they're finding that our students are excelling with ten marks, we do watch that data and we do survey our teachers. We, we have budgeted for ten marks and the resources, yes.
So there's teachers that are still paying ten marks?
Yes, and Reflex, Dreambox. So we have several different math resources that our teachers use K five.
I know you would ask about the collection for this year. And that was based off of, I said, the purchases that were made in seventeen. We anticipated we spent in eighteen, that we actually had that study in seventeen. So we're going to reduce some of those costs after the fiscal eighteen. We took a wireless sheet that begins, I showed it to E three for those teachers. For the foot machine, I love that we have four wedding, and it's just something we purchased in seventeen. We've seen, we've been increased sixteen thousand for the replacements this year. But we've increased however, we loved it. By that same amount, they did that by the zero. When we met the A and John earlier this year, they felt that at this point it was going to be okay. They've been reduced from that and still be able to operate, so kind of keep them on that. Also, the forecast that had a four hundred thousand dollar annual capital needs budget, which allows them to kind of avoid issues and different things that come up. We're out here and things where we have all kinds of interest due to, so we just bring in things that come up. So they do have a hundred thousand dollars here to do improvements or any capital needs. But we still have a quite a long laundry list of unmet capital needs in our district. It was, oh my gosh, I can't remember, two million at one point, but we have, we have a large unmet.
So that was one of my main concerns is can we start seeing that list in this budget? Cause I, I think that's relevant to this discussion is these things don't go away. So they just grew and grew and grew. So I, I would feel more comfortable knowing what's out there, especially since a lot of this stuff has to happen over years, not months. That would be helpful to me just from a knowing.
Oh, absolutely. I actually used, used to keep it in the very back of my forecast. I had an unmet needs list.
We're seeing that.
Yeah, so it's not in this one, but I can absolutely add on.
Yeah, I'd like.
Because we do keep it, we do keep it up and it grows. And there are times where things have to be removed from the unmet needs list because they, they have to now be done. So then we have to take something that we had on the to-do list and remove the unmet needs list because we were, you know, had to remove it. So there are some shuffling that happens with that.
But that includes some of the things that we talked about, the safety committee.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I mean, there's things where we have tried to stretch out some of our replacement plans, the computers and different types of technology, we stretch it out way farther than it has to. Which we, then we end up spending a lot of the money that's budgeted trying to keep them to live on. So we do look at that as an unmet need because if we were able to have a replacement cycle, we're going to replace them when, when they should be replaced. But it would also cost X dollars. So you can kind of, that's part of our unmet needs list. It's just the fact that we have to stretch everything so far out there as well. But yes, we can, I can absolutely get that. Can you get that to me if it's updated from the one I have?
Yeah, I'll get that to you first thing in the morning.
Here is where I show the athletics piece. So for the athletics and the general fund, about two hundred and fifty, this is what I projected this school year, two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven seventy-five for admin salaries and benefits. So that will be Austin, Jim and T V and the benefits. And then supplemental participation costs, facility costs and benefits for all the supplemental. For four seventy-six, six and ten hours and benefits, at least six ninety-five, seven seventy-five. And our previous transfer that the board has already been doing each year is bringing in sixteen hundred thousand starting this year. Well, it's going to be in the sixty-five or four eighty-eight. It was three fifty-five, or three fifty-five before, but then we added a few cross country, so it just sort of forwarded from the add this a thousand dollars to our transfer. So would that plus pay participating, six ninety-eight, six ninety-eight, it would cover those salaries and benefits. So there'll be zero general fund costs this year, additional costs because the paper and safety and the transfer will cover that. This is the one that I kind of wanted to zoom in on and kind of just take a second to really let this sink in. This is our income, our income and expense simplified statement. So this basically just shows you the beginning balances, what we propose in each year revenue wise and expenditure wise, there are any balances. So you can see this is, this three years important, so there's three major takeaways. First major takeaway is the fact that every single year in our five year forecast, we are deficit spending. So that obviously means that our current projected revenue is not enough to support our current education costs. So that's one indicator right there that we can see, well, being one of the lowest costs per pupil, the lowest three percent in state of Ohio, and we don't really have anything we can cut that wouldn't affect our absolute core education. So when you're running in the deficit spending, that helps you out, you need revenue. The second thing to take out of that is this negative one point six million dollars is our current estimated general fund balance of fiscal twenty-two. That amount is with the substitute levy passing. So assuming the substitute levy passes, we still show a negative one point six million dollars in fiscal twenty-two. So that's where I'm in this group, we'll have to look at potential new revenue somewhere in the future. If that levy were to not pass, we would be negative almost thirty-two million dollars by fiscal twenty-two if that renewal were to not pass. So the questions that I kind of see out there sometimes is, you know, we want to revisit this every five years. We want to be able to make decisions every five years. And I understand that and I can totally appreciate that understanding behind that. There is no way, this is not, this is a cumulative effect that doesn't even start until nineteen. So it would have been even higher if it would have been starting in eighteen. So because it doesn't go into effect until nineteen. You can see there is thirty-two million dollars in the hole. I mean, you're talking eight million dollars a year. So eight times five is four, you know, forty million. So there's never going to be a time that this district is not more than getting forty million dollars in the budget forecast. This, this would be devastating to our district. This would send us to the fiscal emergency and state takeover. First time that the levy was to not pass this, this levy. Or at least pass the substitute levy. And with the substitute levy bringing in that little bit of initial revenue, we still make it more.
Sorry, just to clarify, with the line item, those new levies, is that just a portion of the workplace type levy?
Just right here, yes, yeah. So this one, this one kind of gets tricky because it shows eight point four. What it is, is the county auditor has to set the tax rate to ensure he collects that seven million, that hundred and sixteen thousand. So he sets the tax rate to where it kind of collects a little more just to make sure they collect that exact amount. And that's what the emergency levy is for. So what they do is they reduce in this other revenue section, they reduce the other levies that they have so that they're not over collecting altogether. They just make sure they collect, so if they overcollect on this one, they just reduce our other monies that they collect on. So that we get our dead tax dollars that we're supposed to receive, still staying the same. But yes, that is not adding any additional revenue. Where additional revenue is adding, excuse me, is right here. I've added eighty-four thousand projected revenue from the substitute piece, so I kept them separate. I have this straight renewal and then I've added if it were a substitute, it would be an additional eighty-four thousand approximately. This is just based off of estimates of what I think might be billed and valued by the tax department. Eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four twenty-seven. It's been added about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand additional dollars to the forecast for between now and twenty-two. So obviously it's not going to answer the problem. It's just moving in the right direction to try to reduce any possible new money levy moving in the future that you won't be able to grow back in the same credits. It would just help reduce that and maybe push it out a little bit, follow the vibe of the, I just don't rather them put the substitute levy. That's my biggest takeaway is I just want, I just want to make sure people see that almost thirty-two million dollars in twenty-two didn't pass that levy.
So just for your communication sake, what time, what, at what point was the state involved before the report outlined?
Well, the moment that you're negative and you don't have any approved revenue source. So if we were to go for a levy and not pass it right here, they would start sending you a fiscal, we're giving them a financial crystal culture. And then the state would come in. So you can kind of go back and look through the classes that Little Miami had to go through when they didn't pass their levy. It was very, it was very interesting because I, I know the treasurer of Little Miami turned down. It was very interesting, the whole process of what they do. They come in and they just, well, not only that, you have to pay the money back. So even if the state comes in and starts paying the expenses for you, you have to pay it back. And so it's just a huge, it just flips everything upside down and it's, it's hard to get out of it too. And then it's published everywhere too. So everybody would know that we were in that state. So I had my overall takeaway, that was just basically the overall. The biggest reduction was the reduction of staying in addition to the paying participating. The fact that we have some fees for special education. And the fact that our cash balance did increase about four hundred and thirty-two thousand for this year. Between the main forecast and now mainly most of that is new to the addition of the paying participating fees to the general fund. However, there'll be the corresponding expenditures that will be available in the expenditure side. So then this was just our overall forecast. I don't like how this looks, so it doesn't show very nicely on here. So I did give you a separate page that has a nicer forecast for you to see. So it's the same thing as the income, the simplified one. It just shows it to you line by line, but you can see right here it's still that negative one point six million dollars. And that if we pass the renewal on substitute levy. This one is that cash balance reserve that the board approved last year. This is where we get the indication of when we're going to need to look at making some decisions, whether we need money or reductions or what have you. And you can see as of right now, we will fall below the threshold in after fiscal twenty for fiscal twenty-two. Because ten percent of our, which is what the board said that, the cash balance reserves, ten percent of our yearly expenditures. So that would be five point five, so we're okay right now at fiscal twenty. But after fiscal twenty, they send those, that'd be two point two, so we fall, then we'd be five point seven eight. So that would give us a few years to make some decisions on what we would want to do and kind of keep going here.
Do you have to target cash balance?
Yes, it's right there.
But then, I'm sorry, is there a target, the hundred percent target?
Ten percent here, yeah, that was, yeah, that's what the board approved. There's some, there's a thirty-eight cash on hand, sixty-eight cash on hand. There's some districts that have sixty-nine, these cash on hand. But I can't see our community ever believing we would need this type of cash balance to operate. To me that, you can operate on ten percent, which is also very similar to the thirty-eight cash on hand. It's about either forty, forty-five days of cash on hand. That becomes real tricky because when you have payroll and things that you have to go do in January and into February and tax advances, if they get pushed back a couple of weeks, we can't beat payroll. We're, we're down here, you know, working on two million dollars at the end of the year cash balance. Every time we're not going to have a couple hundred thousand dollars on it. I'm good, that's all I have for you.
Any other questions for the five year forecast presentation? Since this is working session, any questions for the president?
I do, I'm sorry. As you go through this process, which is excellent, very detailed. Do you go through any type of capacity planning for the facilities? And as you go out and you're like point one, point two, are you looking at student population as well? Try to make any prognostication there or?
John was very good at that piece. John had a really involved, how many years out do you try to predict our?
I, I try to predict about eight years going forward. And then it takes into account the last twenty years of, of enrollment.
So does that feed into what you do or?
Unfortunately, you don't have the money to, you're going to do long-term planning, which is part of the reason why it's surprising that districts like ours are growing that we don't have affirmative levy. Because affirmative levy is the first thing, is usually the first step a district would take when they're in a process of growing. And that would allow you to do some really good long-term planning. Most districts have between at least three and five percent for clearly capital needs set aside. Ours is about two point one. So we just don't have the money, that's why our unmet needs list that we'll be happy to share grows. Because we don't have the ability, we can do all of that work. It's just, there's no, we have no money to, to put any of those plans in place. So for us right now, we're just trying to maintain and we kind of, it's more of a, I hate to say it, but it's more of a rock, here they call to try to keep up when we just don't have the money. So we do all the statutory requirements and things like that and do those types of planning. I mean, we have a year-on-year thing where we'll say, we have a lot of new kids coming in. Okay, what, what can we, what can we do here? So then we kind of say, let's stretch out technology and try to wait another year for those computers that we're going to buy because we need my desks. And that's the kind of stuff that gets down to that level, trying to just make sure we don't have any overages and to try to procure our cash balance as long as possible. Because we just don't, we just don't know when we're going to be able to do more. So I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely great to celebrate a little cost per pupil, but at some point, it's like their, their needs, their being, their needs, the investment into making sure that we can sustain everything that we have and then also our future.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Question out here, I believe?
Question on the state funding. So with the five to the three, and then what you're throwing, the state owes money. It's like, can you clarify that a little bit? I like did some research within the state house and the education committee. And they were saying that the state does not owe any school district money. When they guarantee funds, there's millions of the bank accounts that are dispersed to the schools that they never owe money to the school. So I was just kind of curious whether it could be a deficit if Columbus is saying that.
I can show you. We have it very detailed within the forecasting software that we have. We have it very detailed. It goes all the way down to how taxes are actually calculated. And so it's, it'll be very obvious to show you how it works. And these also could be pulled, I mean, the information that's in here, you can absolutely pull online on the state page under our district alone. So I could always refer you to that if you ever wanted to see that, but I can show you here if I can get it. So right here is our revenue detail note for our state funding. I'll try to blow it up so that you can kind of see. So when you're looking here, unfunded formula above the cap. So the foundation funding based off of, off the way that they calculate state funding. The state owes us seventeen point seven million dollars this year. We are getting fourteen million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand based off of the formula and all the provisions they've put in place. So at the end of the day, they did not give us two million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars that they owed to us if the formula that they put in place would pay us exactly what it's supposed to pay us.
That's the three percent?
No, that's with the three percent. So they still owe us after what we're getting this year. They owe us two million, nine hundred and fifty-six. If you see next year, they'll owe us one million, one hundred and sixty-six. And then, 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 because they're giving us a little bit more of that and then they'll give us seven hundred and ninety-three. Then by twenty twenty, anticipating us from being a guaranteed district, which may help us. Because then they'll guarantee at whatever level they guarantee at the next biennial budget, they will guarantee us at a certain level and we will. Because then they'll guarantee at whatever level they guarantee at the next budget, they will guarantee us at a certain level and we will get that much money. They won't be able to, to cap it or do anything else because we'll be, we'll have received all of that unfunded money by that year. That's what I'm anticipating, unless they do something crazy different in the next go-around. I mean, but I'd be happy to sit with you and show you how that, because I mean, I know they try, you know, we're good at twisting all kinds of things, but the math is very easy and you can pull it, you can pull it up right on their, on the website under state funding report for fiscal eighteen and it'll show you all the numbers. And it literally is like twenty pages and it'll show you every single category and every single dollar we get. And then it shows you what we should get and then it shows you what we're actually getting. And there's no, there's no way to deny this is what we should be getting and this is what we're going to cut you a check for by the end of the year. And, and then the difference is how much is considered unfunded above the cap. So, if they would have given us, say, five and a half percent this year, then that number would be quite a lot smaller than two point nine. If they would have given us five and a half, five percent like we were looking for. So, but I, I mean, I'd be happy to, if you ever wanted to talk about that, I'd be happy to show you that. But they are definitely not giving us what?
Definitely the difference is in sort of how you define, they've said that we're going to get over that number ways, the fourteen-eight. They pay us that, they don't owe us anymore on that fourteen-eight. If you apply the formula and calculate what we should have received based on our home, it's a higher number. So, I mean, I think it's probably just a semantic thing. I mean, it's not like they don't pay us the fourteen-eight, they do. The formula tells us they should have paid us a higher amount and I think that's what you were.
Yeah, so when you actually say, okay, we're going to give you six thousand ten dollars per people and then, then we're also going to give you weighted, weighted money for special education categories and they give you all these and they say, okay, for transportation, we're going to give you this, we're going to give you all this. And then at the end of it, they say, okay, you're going to get seventeen million. And then, but, we got to cap you, we're only going to give you fourteen million. Yes, they do give us every cent of that fourteen million that they give us. But if the formula were to really work the way it's supposed to work, they should be able to give us all of it.
I guess I just wanted to clarify, they're not dead to the school, it's just that they're.
They're just, they're just based off the formula that they've created. They're not able to fund that formula as they've created it in form.
Which it seems like they would rework the formula to be held up aboard.
Just to show that, that, yeah. So, I mean, if I understand what you're saying, of course, they're going to say, no, we give them everything that's owed, we're not short them. Well, they're giving us the, the money that they've decided to give us, but.
Shorten, very many hours, what, what anyone was that?
Right. And it's all, it's all relative of how they say it, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question, just a little random. Is there a resource to find information on case studies on how setting a school district into fiscal emergency affects the community as a whole, the local businesses? Where can I find them? Because I see a lot of comments on social media right now about people without children in schools and how it affects the taxes on their home, yet, you know, what are they gaining from it and everything, the bigger picture is being seen, I mean.
Yeah, there's directly, there's actually studies and there is a direct correlation to property values in your schools. So, if your schools are.
Good reasons to go and look that up just to share with the world.
I don't know if they have anything on ODE, I know they have things on funding forms. I'll check, I'll check and see if I can't find something. I know there is things out there because we've talked about it on Trax and stuff, OSBA and OASO on the correlation between your city, your, your property taxes and your schools. As your schools go downhill, you can't give your house away, so it's.
Actually, the neighborhood, when I worked on a past levy committee, there's a neighborhood in Little Miami and the neighborhood has Little Miami School District on this side of the street and Kings on this side of the street. And the difference in the cost of the homes, if you were in Little Miami District versus Kings was astronomical. And it was simply because of the school district, do you remember that? And that is, we were showing that. Something I work with now lives in that, in that district, I said, your neighborhood was, was one of our case studies of, you know, the significance of what it does do to your community and your home values.
Well, again, I think, I think an important point to remember is in fact that we would still owe that money back to the state if it's not free money. So, the burden left on the community is going to be, the further you stretch out, it's going to be astronomical. Yeah, that's a great point, it's not going to be good.
Thanks, thanks for.
Yeah, thank you.
Very decent. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I go dip dip.
Mr. President, in terms of a levy presentation, I'd like to cover the logistics of this levy. As tonight, you know, we share with you, make sure you support the levy, there is a website, for those who have not seen it, keepspringberlstrong.org. Again, keepspringberlstrong.org. For those of you watching on the worldwide web, the millions of people watching, keepspringberlstrong.org. On the top left, there is a tab that says, what is issue eight? In there, a lot of information and a video. A video that I did a week or so ago at Spring Borough Rotary, had a little over nine minutes, it talks about the levy, levy in layman's terms. And then there is a tab to the top right that says, questions. These are a lot of questions.
Mine is issue eighteen.
What did I say?
Eighteen.
Issue eighteen. Something about Bernie Cozler, I'm sorry. But issue nineteen, or eighteen, there are question, there's a questions tab and any question we've received over the web or through email, we try to put in there with answers. So, there's a lot of information there. For issue eighteen, we encourage all of you to get out and vote on November seventh. That is the levy update, Mr. President. We're ready to move to the treasurer's report unless you want to take a rest.
Sorry, I don't know if that's a couple of years ago. First one is September five, and it's, it's going to be about what's happened here in September, I don't know midway through October now, but we did receive about five point four million dollars in revenue, you know, in the month of September. So, we all, we're just waiting right now, sometimes there's something October we're receiving, we're about to hold that, which is our last large chunk of money that we're going to get. And the other one, we're receiving foundation revenue, and so, any of this, all these revenues, do you need to pay those things like that until February when the tax advances come in? So, each one from here on out, you'll see our cash balance is going to run down and we start receiving the next half of our tax advances. I mean, the share of salaries came in at two point two arms change from the month, all, all contracts are now on the fiscal eighteen, which is definitely the percentage. So, all contracts starting on September fifth, our last, our last group received their first, yeah, fiscal eighteen contract in September sixth. Now, everybody's on this new contract, so we know of the additional types. Then it is for eight hundred and ten thousand in the month of September, which is in line, you can kind of see I've got, I've got on the report now, but I've got the five-year done. You'll be able to see on the income report, we all have my cash flow analysis. It'll show fifteen, sixteen, seventeen actual, and then I'll have it for you. You can see if you have any questions on the other several, it's been a lot of time, a lot of things I talked forever on earlier part. But I did give you the major expenditures for purchase service, supplies, man, equipment, obviously, you can kind of see at the table. We spent three hundred and three thousand for supplies of that, hundred and sixteen thousand was spent for tax flows, eighty-two thousand for operations, supplies and fuel. On the backside, we have the equipment, we spent seventy-nine thousand in business, so that started to run down. Because as I always say, we have the content costs and then pretty much after school, you start to, you know, have to purchase a lot of important items. Our cash balance for all funds was twenty-five, twenty-five million at the end of September and our general fund alone was over fourteen million for September. So, those are our financials for September. And if you have any questions or detail on here, you're free asking us all the reports also on board notes of the actual detail.
I have a quick question that came up, I forgot to ask you with the five-year. Like, when the energy project, when we made the hundred and eighty-seven thousand or whatever it was, does that just go back into the general fund or does he take that and go towards our unmet needs or what do we do with that?
It's not revenue, what it is, is basically I look at, before the energy project, what it told that, I look at our.
Oh, I see.
And then, then the next year, I say, here's the total cost plus the debt. Well, how is that different than our costs?
That makes sense, okay.
So, I've just accumulated it. So, it's, it's just basically that we're saving more and you receive a reduction in purchase service. So, there's no actual revenue coming. The only kind of receiving revenue is if we would not receive, if we would not receive the savings that we should see in our utilities at any given year, then we would go and ask for a check from Trump.
Right, to make the difference.
Then I would give a say, because that revenue back in to, you know, all.
So, the savings, we're just then adjusting the five-year because we're saving money and then we're adjusting, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
And then the next item I have is the five-year forecast that I kind of went on for a while about some of that. And then registration aid ways, four point three. And then we did receive a donation at the last minute, so I'm not sure if you guys have seen this, but we did have approval for a donation of library books for the spring borough junior high from Mr. John Thor, Mary Daddie, that three hundred and thirty dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Where do you go?
He's, he's on the phone right there.
He needs to vote.
Well, it's four oh.
Anderson?
Yes.
That, four A?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready to move to the executive director, Mr. Corporations, Mr. Fennell.
Members of the board, for your consideration today, we've got a few things. Number five point one is a, an agreement for a tour over the summer that is, I believe this is Julie Kreis' group that will be going. So, we've run that through the attorney, just like we always have, and that's the standard agreement that we have. Five point two is the approval of the October transportation hours. So, we've worked through the, all the routes and we have them all set up and we're, we're able to change some of the routes, some go up, some go down, but that's what this is. Five point three, this is the final list of the Camp Kern volunteers for five points and Dennis that we've got at this point in time. Five point four, we have our first set of personnel items and this is for our standard items. We've got one, one termination, classified termination. We've got approval of several supplemental personnel, although which are, are the ones that we normally have. And then we've got two leave of absences.
Ready to approve items five point one and five point four, Mr. President.
Okay, is there a motion? Who goes on?
I have one question. Do you have any idea of John, why there would be five point one as an action item? Because that needs to be voted on separately. Because it says five point one is an action item, then five point two, three, four are informational, but then five point.
No, it, no, it should, all of those are, all of those are approval items. Yep, I'm not sure how that got changed.
Okay. A little cough.
Anderson?
Yes.
Colony?
Yes.
Yeah. And five point six is our supplemental report for the athletic side of the house and those are all, all of these folks have already been here before. So, this is just basically redoing them in their same positions.
Second.
When somebody's on a step twenty-six?
Yep, go ahead.
Does that mean they've been here twenty-six years coaching?
Well, it, well, it means they've been here at least twenty-six years coaching.
Is it step twenty-six?
Yeah, it's, it's up twenty-six, there's no, but there's no, there's no step, I mean, there's no increments that he's getting, but he's been here at least twenty-six years.
I can make a guess, it used to be where they would make steps and then when they came out of the.
Right, they stopped getting, and, and they, they keep track, they used to keep track of it and that's why it's still there, but they don't now. If you notice, all those other people on there were at step zero, but they'd been there multiple years.
We had zero to three, get a raise.
Right.
Four to six, and then over seven.
Right.
Till for some reason we get again.
Right, and, and that was, yeah.
If he was on the step twenty-six, but none of those other people were here.
Oh, I see, that's why I'm very, because those people, these people have been here for a while.
Yeah, they've all been here for a while, right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, that's the way, Mindy has just kept going because that's been on there every year that way, believe it or not, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or member on the switch.
Uh, I'd like to first like to say, thank Ms. Floyd for, for very detailed, oh, if you had a budget, that's always appreciated. No, 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 I, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, as a finding, that's what I thrive on. It was excellent and answered all my questions and hopefully, you know, the public will get a chance to see what you presented as well, get to understand it, like I said, great job. And I appreciate the students coming in and talking about their achievement, that's very impressive, it's incredible we have four out of, what do they say?
Three to something, state half twenty.
It's incredible, I mean, so, great job. So, that's everything I've got, thank you.
Yeah, I do wanted to thank the guests that we had here this evening, students. I thought it was great how they both referenced their experience with our teachers, I know it was a great testament. Obviously, they're exceptional kids, but it was, you know, great that they both recognized and saw, you know, how our teachers have impacted their, their performance as well. So, I thought that was a great testament to the quality of the teachers and staff that we have here at the school. So, I appreciate their, their presentation, also enjoyed Chris Pizzuto coming and sharing about Osselin disappointing obviously that you're not receiving any of that, that revenue. But I guess the fact that the party will flow better is reassuring.
Well, I called him and told him what we wanted, he said, why, you're not getting any.
I know.
For everyone to see you explain everything in detail if you have questions, so.
Well, it's good because I think there is probably self included, there's a lot of confusion about that, the fact that the city lines are different than the school district lines. So, I mean, I think that was helpful to clarify that, so I appreciate him coming. I just also wanted to, to thank, I know we talked a little bit about the levy and I know there's some folks in the room that have been involved with that, the folks who were here earlier. So, just wanted to extend my appreciation for all the work that's gone on to this point. I know there's still a lot of work to be done, but just appreciate the, the time and energy that a lot of people are, are putting into it and folks in this room, some of our administrators doing it on their free time. And our partners from, from some of the previous campaigns and neighbors from Shinrow Schools, I mean, they've really come alongside us as well. So, just appreciative, appreciative of all of those efforts and the folks working together to, to make that levy successful. And then just finally, I saw this come through, Mr. Scher, you forwarded this to us and I saw this with the, the school's Facebook page as well. But just wanted to congratulate the team that was involved with the grant from NASA. You know, that was really encouraging to see, I think that's going to be, it's a great resource for our teachers and students, kind of exciting to see how they're going to be able to apply this. So, just wanted to extend my congratulations to the folks involved with that and be interested maybe at some point to hear some of the things that we're doing with that. And maybe make for a good, good student presentation one of these weeks, so, that's all I have.
How did that NASA grant come to be? That's a really cool thing.
I, I received an email in early July and I looked it over and I thought, you know, there's, there's, this would be really good for our school district. So, I, I read through it and found out it was due July thirty-first and I got even more excited because nobody works in July. So, except Terrell Lloyd. So, I thought, wow, we probably have a really good chance at this because a lot of folks are off in July.
Yeah.
So, after reading through it, I got some ideas and then I called Beth Holtry and I begged her, I said, hey, what are you doing? She's like, we've got a cruise coming up and we're going to like Cumberland. And I'm like, how about you come into the office for a couple of days? I'm begging because I think there's this grant out that we can get some money on. So, she came in and worked with me, we wrote it and we had a really successful first day with thirty teachers on Monday. And in fact, I was, while I was listening to all of your discussion, I was over here working on our second day. So, we're looking forward to our second day next week and then the culmination of PD days on November tenth, which there's no sub-costs on November tenth because that's a PD day for all of our teachers. And we already have teachers who after Monday have already developed some lesson plans and they're excited to, to get those going in their classroom. They have to do three lesson plans, one of those is Skype with. Um, one of those is a Skype with an, a NASA engineer or scientist. One is a lesson that meets their standards using augmented or virtual reality, which they learned on, uh, Monday. And then the third one is a lesson of their choice using their science or math standards. So, we're really excited to have that, and we had thirty-two teachers apply. Unfortunately, we did not have subs for two of them. So, I'll be getting them caught up, um, next week so that they're ready for day two. We don't want to lose those two teachers because of a sub issue, but I'll be working with them next week to get them caught up. So, thirty-two people applied, and we're excited to have them.
Well, thank you again for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well worth it.
Absolutely. Um, I had a couple of things, and I appreciate Jamie's comments. I wanted to clarify a little bit, um, with something that was, was said last board meeting, and just give some explanation around it. Um, I was part of the previous leadership with Neighbor Shrimbro Schools. And, um, our purpose, our purpose initially in wanting to hold on to some of the funds, save some of the funds, was simply because it is traditionally harder to, um, pass a new money levy. Our intention is one hundred percent not to cause any division or cause any problems for this levy. And after that discussion happened, we got together and said, if this is going to cause any issues, this is not a division point that we want to cause. We are fully supportive of this. And so, we, at that point, um, made the decision to transfer everything over. If that is where the need is, this is not something that is worth having a division in the community. We need this levy to pass. So, um, Neighbor Shrimbro Schools is one hundred percent behind this levy. We know that we need it. There's never been a question. Um, Tara's presentation clearly shows that there is a need for this levy to pass. So, um, there's some people that are putting that, that it's, like, there's a divide, like Neighbor Shrimbro Schools is not working alongside the current levy committee. That is definitely not the case. We're not trying to cause any issues at all. We support this. Um, are readily answering any questions that are asked and offering any support that, um, is asked of us. So, I just wanted to clarify that. We want to come along and support, and, um, we know that it's, it's definitely needed in our community. So, that's that. Um, I came across a quote, and it was about early childcare education this, um, this week. And it just jumped out at me. And then, after hearing our two, um, National Merit Scholars, it just, it kind of tied it all together for me. And the quote was, "We are partners in caring for your child." And that just, it jumped out at me because I saw, I, you clearly heard it when I asked, what was it that really helped you in your direction? And both of them talked about the impact of their teachers. And I definitely have seen it with my boys in the impact of teachers, administrators, counselors that have come alongside at different points, whether it's education, whether there's personal needs, whatever it is, that do more than just educate. And, you know, I look at that, and we're partners in caring for your child. And so many times, that's more than the education. It's who they are as a person. And my son is home from Ohio State for fall break right now, and he and three other kids from Ohio State spent a couple of hours here this morning at the high school because they wanted to stop in and see their teachers. And I think that says a lot for the teachers in our school district. So, I just appreciate all of those educators and staff and administrators that build into our kids and do it more than for your, you know, seven to three job, eight to four, whatever your hours are. I just, there's so many things that have jumped out that really go back to who we are as a district, and we want to keep that strong. That's all.
But, I'm just trying to, uh, tag-team what Lisa said. I don't think I ever come to one of these meetings where I'm not, um, I don't walk away feeling energized and, and so positive about this place. And I say this place, it's the teachers. It's, I know Andrea, in the summer, she likes to go on that boat from listening to her. I mean, here she takes a couple of days and sees something that would benefit kids, and says, makes a phone call, and get the rest of the, you know, as many people as she can to help. And so, so, so it's written, and, yeah, I mean, you just don't find that everywhere. And Tara, with what she gave today, and these two gentlemen at the end are probably more astute on all this than perhaps the rest of us. But, I mean, to, to see the, sorry, but, but to see the detail.
We tried to-
I mean, and no, you didn't go on too long, and, and it is long, and it's tedious. And if you're not built that way, it's, but it was so, you know yourself. And, um, so, for the treasurer, what Dan sent out today about, about the whole NASA, I mean, just, there's just so many good things going on and positive things, um, in this community. And to have a new principal who shows up here at the meetings and, and, um, and I hear from Dan, have asked for it. So, so it's, it's just good. It's, I, I mean, I just walk away from here feeling like, no, I, I didn't drag myself here. I didn't. I just, it's, it's a joy. And, um, and I think all five board members feel that way. And there's, and there isn't anybody up here that's not supporting these, these children and this levy. And we want this levy to pass, and, and I think it's pretty obvious that, that down the road, you know, we're going to need some help again. But, anyway, but we will make the most out of what we have. We always, we've always done that as long as I've been around here. And, uh, we've got a treasurer that apparently she can pinch nickels, and, uh, and gets John, John pinches pennies, doesn't he? So, anyway, just, that's all. Just general conversation.
Right on, all four of them.
That's right. Boom.
I echo everything that's been said, but our, one thing I wanted to add, and you can correct if I'm wrong. The boosters have coming up, what, November fourth?
Oh, yeah.
November fourth, a fundraiser at Heather's. Um, it's the Iowa, Ohio State football game. You know, O-H-I-O. And, uh, tickets, you know, you can get online and see, uh, how much they are. And, you know, the cost covers food and stuff like that. But, um, one thing that will be neat, people that go there, we have a player, obviously, at Iowa, Sean Welsh, that I don't wish him any bad luck, but, you know, I have to root for Ohio State that day. But it'll be kind of neat. I'm sure a lot of people will be there that know Sean. So, I just wanted to throw that out. It's the fourth of November, I believe. I don't know what, I think, they don't know what time it's going to be playing that day. It's to be announced. I believe we have any, uh, executive session, so adjourn me to return. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Second. No.
No, Dan.
Dan.
Yes.
Yes. Flodgin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for coming.